To the city of Palm Coast, City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 15th, 2022. It is now 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So with that, I would ask you, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, founded on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Alton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Again, thank you all for coming this morning and welcome. We open our agenda this morning with public participation. I'll review the requirements for public participation. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes and pursuant to the City Council's meeting policies and procedures. Number one, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. Number two, the public may provide comments to the City Council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from public, there may be discussion by the City Council. Number three, when addressing the City Council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor. B, make their comments concise and to the point. C, not speak more than once on the same subject. And D, not by speech or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the City Council. E, obey the orders of the mayor or the City Council. And F, not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the City Council, while pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Number four, any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. Now with that said, those are our rules in our efforts to maintain decorum and to make sure that each of you that care to make public comment today are well respected by all in the audience as well as city staff and of course, our City Council. So with that, I welcome the first speaker to please come and share a public comment at this time. Please stand and come forward, whoever would like to be first. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Marsha Corby. I'm president of the Flagler County Association of Realtors. I have some talking points I'd like to go through. Councilman Branquino stated when he proposed the moratorium, and I quote, "I know some organizations are not going to be happy with that, but I don't fold like a cheap wallet and don't get easily intimidated by anyone." He says the people of Palm Coast want this moratorium. I want to say this commission, we Realtors are not here to intimidate anyone. We are here representing the interest of many people that live and work in Palm Coast, a city we all love. I'm the 2022 president of Flagler County Association of Realtors, which represents 1,200 Realtors in the county. Many of them are here today. As Realtors and small business owners, it goes without saying that a strong and accessible housing market is critical for our profession. But this issue is about so much more than that. This is about affordable housing and ensuring that Palm Coast continues to embrace those who work in the Palm Coast and want to live and raise their families here. We have an affordable housing crisis in Florida, and Flagler County is no different. The pandemic, a growing population, and other economic factors have put increased pressure on housing for many Floridians. The numbers are staggering. Last year, the median price for a single-family home in Florida was up $355,000, up 18.3% from one year earlier, and a staggering 81.1 higher than just five years ago. House incomes are not rising anywhere to that rate. To further restrict the availability of multifamily units, often only, often the only option for many low to moderate income families ignores the affordability crisis. Even worse, it magnifies it. We should be striving to do the exact opposite of this proposal, creating more availability and varied options for the first-time homebuyers and young families to achieve the stability and freedom that comes from homeownership. I oppose this misguided moratorium and ask that each of you on this commission oppose it as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will the next speaker approach, please?
Good morning. Mike Martin, I live in the Tansas Woods. And Mr. Branquino, I want to make it clear that I am not addressing my comments to you.
Please, please, the speaker will please address all comments to me directly.
Okay, but I want to make clear that none of my comments are meant for Mr. Branquino. Mayor Alton, I want to start by quoting your own remarks given at the start of the March 1st meeting. Quote, "I want to reassure to all who call this beautiful city of Palm Coast home that your City Council will continue to work together full-heartedly to ensure you receive the leadership you've come to expect and deserve," unquote. So we deserve sneaky, underhanded, dishonest leadership, Mayor Alton? Because that's exactly what you have given us in sneaking through a vote on a very contentious issue to award yourselves a 365% increase in your current salaries. You achieve this by deliberately leaving this issue off the agenda on March 1st and bringing it up under Other Business at the end of the meeting. Other Business, as you well know, is designed to deal with last-minute issues that arise that are too late to be included on the public agenda. It was never meant for knowingly contentious, serious issues. And I know you had been thinking about this for several weeks prior. Other Business is the layer of sleazy dishonest politicians who, knowing that Other Business is always the last item on the agenda, and that 98% of the attending public have already gone home, use this opportunity to sneak through items they don't want to publicly discuss. We expected better from you. We deserve better from you. You have voted to enrich yourselves with a 365% raise when there would be no public to respond to it. Shame on you. You have acted like every sleazy and dishonest politician has acted. If you had believed in your arguments for this raise, you would have raised this issue publicly and placed it on the agenda and allowed full and open public discussion. Instead, you snuck this through with contentious issue with no public notice whatsoever, and you have won your first vote. Mayor Alton, do we citizens of Palm Coast deserve sneaky, underhanded, dishonest leadership? Because that's what you, Mr. Clufus and Mr. Danko, have given us. This issue should have been raised in a workshop, not snuck through like you did. Is this open and transparent governance? Hell, no! We will not forget this when you three come up for election in 2024. A politician with integrity would never have acted like this. But perhaps you three have no integrity, and I'm really disappointed in you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sue Urban. I too am speaking in regards to the pay increase that you are asking for. I believe, as you all know, you are leaders in this community, and you work for the city of Palm Coast and its residents. Therefore, you are asking us for a raise. And I believe, as citizens, we have a right to give you that, and that is something you should be asking us for, not granting yourselves. This should go to a public vote. This should go to the ballot box. This is not something that you should be voting for for yourselves. This needs to go to the ballots. This is not something that you should decide. And for the amount that you're asking for, I do not believe that is fair. I, as an employee, have never received a raise for that amount. You all ran for this office. You knew what you were getting paid when you ran for office. You knew how much the salary was. Asking for that amount of a raise is ridiculous. I don't think anyone in this room has ever received a raise that much. If you were asking for 50%, maybe that would be acceptable, but for asking for 365% is ridiculous. Ask for a reasonable amount, maybe we would agree to it, but for what you're asking, that is absurd. Send it to the ballot box, let us vote for it, and maybe we will be somewhat receptive to that, but what you're asking is not okay. And to have it snuck into something like that in a meeting, that is not acceptable. Please allow us to grant it to you and do it so in a respectable way. Do so by sending it out. Let us decide what you deserve. Do so with a full commission. Don't do so with a missing member. Please, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will the next speaker come, please?
Good morning. My name is Eugene Holland. I live in Palm Coast and have been a resident for over 22 years. I was shocked to learn that the council was going to vote themselves an increase, an increase which I calculate to be 400% greater than they are earning. Now, each of you on this board knew exactly what your salaries would be. Two council members said that they're not in it for the money, but they voted for a raise. What are they in it for? Laughs and good times? Citizens of this city are struggling to pay gasoline prices in excess of $4 a gallon. These are the folks that have to drive to and from work. Nobody subsidizes their extra courses, costs. And for the council members to vote themselves an increase, this is un-American to my way of thinking. The voters of this city deserve to decide whether you are worthy of what I calculate to be a 400% increase. This is excessive and offensive to the citizens of this city, and I ask that the proposition for an increase be placed at the next voting, when the citizens have an opportunity to vote on it. You can't vote yourself a raise.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, can you preempt some of this by explaining that the raise would actually be on the ballot and that we were just voting on an ordinance that would bring verbiage forward that would allow us to vote on actually getting it on the next ballot before we have a bunch of speakers just kind of reiterating the facts that aren't true?
Do you want to summarize that so it's clear?
Absolutely. Since it's in our city charter, the vote that occurred last, I guess, last business meeting was actually just to get the verbiage for an ordinance to bring in front of City Council for us to have another vote that would potentially get it onto the ballot. But since it's an amendment to the city charter, that has to be brought before the electoral at whole, which would be everyone at the ballot box in 2022. So there wasn't actually confirmation of a vote that we were going to give ourselves a raise. That would still absolutely have to come before the entire elected body during the next official election.
Thank you, councilman, but we welcome each of your comments, please, from the public.
Terry Maga, East Section. And I'm here to voice my opinion on the 365% increase in your raises that you want to vote yourselves in it. I'm looking at, there's inflation that's going on right now if you haven't looked around. The same thing like the gentleman before had spoke. You got gas, you got utilities, you got, everything's gone up, boom, okay? But yet, you want to go ahead and you want to vote you guys in a raise. You're proposing this raise. It's unsustainable. I mean, it's crazy. And then you look at the other hand, it's like, what have you done for us lately? I mean, really? You built multifamily affordable housing, okay? Renters don't pay the taxes. We're the ones paying the taxes, okay? You made a sweetheart deal with, between the county, the council, and the developers, and the development. You guys go ahead and you impact these, they're so damn low. It's unbelievable. Again, that's a one-time deal that they're paying, and that's going to be on our backs coming down the road. We gotta, we have to put up with that. The other thing also is the rezoning of the land that you guys proposed. I was here at a meeting when you went ahead and you had, you had an industrial land that you guys went ahead and you said, "Oh, no, we're changing that. We're rezoning that to residential." Okay? So you did that. So what kind of jobs are you bringing here to the city itself? Because you can't solely go on just a hospital. All right? The other thing is, if the developers want to go ahead and develop over here, let them pay for our schools. You know, we're going to end up paying to some degree for the schools, but let them pay the brunt of the schools. The other thing is, is there's no forethought about infrastructure. The roads are like packed. The roads are in, some of them are in really bad conditions with holes. You know, and there's so much traffic that's out there right now. Nobody thought about that. What about the lighting? You know? And also, I want to speak about the seniors, because it's not only us young people that are here and living in the city, there's seniors that are living here. There's people that need to have busing to go to where they need to go because they can't drive, people that need to have activity centers for them, and I'm totally against this race. It's not warranted.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Perkins. Thanks for letting us know that you guys are trying to get it on a ballot for your raise. Regardless whether it's voted in by the people or voted in by yourself, I'm totally against this raise at this time with inflation going on for the past year and hyperinflation currently, which there's no end in sight, at least for the next three years. This is not a time. This is not a time to be on the backs of the people of Palm Coast for a raise for you guys. I'm sorry. And if you have the money to give yourself a raise, then that money ought to go to doing something to make improvements within the community, within the infrastructure, within the water, within our flooding. We canceled a festival because of flooding, right here, brand-new town center of flooding. You know, we've got other things on, other problems in our community that need to be fixed. With the rezoning, it's got to stop. I agree, when people buy a property, they have every right to develop it, but when they bought it, they knew what it was zoned for, and it's got to stop. And I'm kind of surprised, because I could have sworn somebody here had campaigned at one time and mentioned about, you know, the tax base with, we need a balance between commercial and residential, you know, for the tax base and everything. But yet, they keep voting time and time and again to rezone. Enough is enough. Stop the rezoning. We need to keep our commercial zoning in place as it was planned for in this city. We need to bring jobs here. I know, we need a variety of jobs here, not just healthcare industry. We need a variety of jobs here. And right now is the time to be doing it, when everybody's screaming to bring back manufacturing and stuff to America. So let's start bringing it here to Palm Coast. We're in a great position. We're on 95, you know, right on the corridor. Not many places in Florida are on that corridor, and we have the train tracks running right through here. So we are in a very prime position. Let's seize the opportunity now. Stop, you know, with the nonsense. Do something for the community. Build this community up. This is what you're voted in to do. Do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your... We'll follow the rules of decorum, so there'll be no applause, there'll be no comments from the public. That's a fair warning. I'll invite the next speaker forward. Please, before you speak, I just want to make sure that we are correct and ask council to summarize Councilman Clufus's description of the process for the discussion regarding compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jennifer Nix of the City Attorney's Office.
Can you give the microphone, please? We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
I apologize. My name's Jennifer Nix. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. I'm right in the microphone, I'm sorry. Jennifer Nix with the City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to point out as to the direction with the potential salary increases that the motion was for the City Attorney's Office to draft an ordinance to be considered and placed upon an agenda for discussion, so it wasn't a ballot vote.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, I just want to make sure that's on the record so that the public can be clear on the process going forward and what steps have taken place and what steps have not taken place to date. But with that, please, I invite the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Paula Lewis, and I live in...
Please, give the respect to the speaker that you would like if you were speaking yourself. Please continue, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No worries. My name's Paula Lewis. I live in the C-section of Palm Coast. My husband and I have been in attendance for several meetings in the last few months. We followed up instructions and we wrote questions on note cards. Those were submitted probably in the October-November timeframe. We have yet to receive any type of response at all or acknowledgement of receipt of those questions. That was topic one. My next topic is that in our community, recently, there have been a high number of homes sold that are sold directly into VRBO. My understanding is that home renters subsidize the city with a tax, so the city is benefiting, but at the same time, this city is not benefiting because of the fact that the homeowners' values decrease. Not only that, but homeowners are placed at risk because of transient population. Next question, next topic, saltwater canal maintenance. Why are freshwater canals dredged? The reasons that you guys dredge is prevent home and street flooding, also to prevent property damage to property owners. Saltwater canals have the same risks. Property damage can be ensued once you have a cup filled so far with water, such as all of our canals. When additional water is added, there is a possibility of flooding. Not only that and damage, not only that, but it provides safe water navigation for people and boats, and there are property asset for the city and the county. Cannot, and they attract tourists and provide recreational activities, and they need to be maintained the same way. The city is the owner of the canals.
Please, will the speaker please wrap up your comment?
I will, I'm wrapping up. The, we, the homeowners, are liable for our own property.
Five more seconds.
Yeah. The city is the owner of the canals. They need to assume that responsibility.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Janet Castaneda. We are living in a time of great inflation with virtually every consumer product increasing by double digits, with auto fuel leading the way by a whopping 49%, and even our city's garbage pickup increasing by 47%. These are hard times for the middle class and are becoming impossible for those retired and living on a social security whose paltry increase was 5.9%. And this is the time you are discussing raising your own salaries by 365%? That would make your pay for a part-time civil service job more than our state legislature. So what is the justification? Do we have excess funds just laying around after budgeting for all city-owned properties, facilities, and infrastructure repairs? A meeting I attended, there was a question where the city was going to get funds to dredge the saltwater canals that the city owns and uses as part of the storm drainage facilities, but hasn't maintained in over 20 years despite collecting three times or more from lot owners along the saltwater canals. Where's that money? I heard, is it to attract qualified people? Really? Are you saying that you all aren't qualified? As I seem to recall, all of you campaigned for the positions you have knowing the pay. If it's to attract qualified people, then maybe none of you deserve the rate hike. Maybe any pay increase in a reasonable amount should only apply to future City Council members or mayors, not the current ones. Otherwise, it is self-dealing and just repugnant. No, by increasing the pay so radically, you will attract greedy people in for the money, not civic-minded. I see no justification for such a huge pay hike, and any pay hike more than the CPI index used by social security should be passed by the residents who pay your salaries. While Palm Coast was voted the number-one place to retire, we will soon be toppled from that position when we have a city who puts their need and greed in front of their residents, especially when 28%, almost one-third of the residents are retired and are on fixed income. I ask that you step into the shoes of the people you represent and do what is in their best interest, not yours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Tony Triviglia. I live in Hidden Lake Subdivision. I've lived there for seven years. Lately, we've been told about a new zoning for a storage unit right across the street from our entrance. Let me tell you this, this has been a two-lane road for over 12 years or more than that, even, I lived here maybe almost 20 years. And I was told over 12 years ago that they were going to expand Old Kings Road to four lanes, which has not happened. In a small portion of it, it may have happened, but not for the major part. We are facing trouble getting out of our subdivision because of just ongoing traffic as it keeps increasing in Palm Coast. And if there's an accident on 95, guess where they all get off if they're going to go northbound? They get off and go down Old Kings Road. And at that point, we can never leave our community, our subdivision, excuse me. So when you plan these things, you don't plan for the traffic, you don't plan for the expansion of the roads that we need to have, especially when you made a light at Old Kings Road and Royal Palm Parkway. There should have been a left turn lane there. When people can't go beyond or be... When people can't go beyond or beside or around the left turn lanes, we're stuck. And if it backs up halfway up to 100, we're stuck there for at least 15, 20 minutes. That's not good planning. Okay? I'll leave that subject alone for this point. I want to go back into, I understand, about the increase in your salaries. I've worked for 77, almost 50 years, over 50 years. I'm 77 years old. I've worked with many professional people. I've worked with lawyers, professional peoples of all levels. Never have I heard of anybody getting that type of an increase. I even did a study on city management. The city manager here makes more than four times what the city manager makes in Tampa or other major cities throughout Florida. This is ridiculous. These rates are ridiculous. These wages that you give yourselves is ridiculous. We are, like everybody else said, we're in inflationary period right now. We're facing double digits in food prices, in gasoline, everything else that went up in the last year, and you want to give yourselves that kind of a raise. I've never heard of it. I've never in my entire life have ever heard of such a raise going up for anybody under any level in any city. So that's, to me, is completely unethical. Pretty much, that's all I have to say. I'm pretty much shooting from the cuff. I didn't bring any notes with me, but I want to let you know that it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Councilman. My name is Joy Cook. I live in Seminole Woods. Hello, Nick. I know we've corresponded.
Yeah, how are you?
On a happier note and a more pleasant thing, we would like to get a bench dedication. We had a resident, Diane Myers, recently die who lived in Seminole. She was a schoolteacher here in Flagler County for over 20-something years, and her family have lived here. But the dedication will not only be for her, it'll be for her son Nicholas. Nick, I'm going to say it right, the right way. Justin Russell, no, Justin Nicholas Russell. He has been a welcome committee down in Seminole Woods forever. If anybody has been down there, he has autism. And he sits there and he waves to everybody and welcomes them. Since his mother's passed, he's been family members now in Benel. But we've been trying to get this done now for almost, since last September, but we had to get some ropes and get permission from family members as well because of the autism. We didn't want to just go and jump the gun, so we got the family's permission to do so. The residents, excuse me, the residents of Seminole Woods would like to see this done in honor of him. And we've put posts about it on Seminole Woods, and we have a very large grouping of people who would like to see something like this done for him. What else did I want to say? I really, that's really about it. I know some, it was going to be, I'm not here to bring this up right at this time, but somebody wanted to use it sort of as a political measure, so that's why I came out here, to speak to you gentlemen in person before letting somebody else just bring it up and make it look like it wasn't really from the residents. Well, that's all I really want to say, and please consider it. He's a wonderful person. And Nick, you will correspond more about this, okay? Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
James Fisk, Palm Coast. In response to the first person who came up here about the moratorium, thank you. I did a little homework last night. As of 11:29 PM, 3:14:22, I looked at the Palm Coast active applications for single-family, multifamily units, single and multifamily units. Right now, active applications are 3,138. Two storage units at 544,766 square feet. One RV boat storage unit, 207 lots. No idea how much land that covers. Oh, and by the way, remember the moratorium on Dollar General stores? Oh, 4350 North US1, there's an application for a Dollar General store. Imagine that. Palm Coast approved projects, single-family and multifamily units, 2,882 units. Three storage units at 269,941 square feet. Two borrow pits at 6,683,847 square feet. One borrow pit is pending, so we don't know how much square footage that is. Overall total units, 6,020 units. Total storage units, square footage, 814,707 square feet. Total known borrow pit, square footage, 6,683,847 square foot. My question, were any of these locations thoroughly checked for historical sites? If so, to what extent? Was there any follow-up? Comprehensive land use considerations taken into regards for historical or sites environment? What happened to Tree City? Is a moratorium needed? Yeah, you bet. What happened to the Greenway put into place by Flagler County? We need answers, and we need them quick, because this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will the next speaker come forward, please?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. On my way home yesterday, the traffic on Palm Coast Parkway backed up past, for the turn lane to go onto Florida Park Drive, backed up past Walmart. And I've seen that more times than I want to see it. I live on Florida Park Drive, and the FDOT said there was 8,400 cars per day, which is 3 million cars per year going through a residential area, 60 feet from the bedrooms of children, 80 feet from the basketball courts of Holland Park. I just think that's just horrible, because if you go out and read the studies on traffic fumes, traffic dust, and traffic noise as to the harm done by numerous health organizations, you know that it's harming the people on Florida Park Drive. As the traffic increases on Palm Coast Parkway, it increases on, and Palm Harbor Parkway, it increases through the neighborhood. It's getting too bad. People are having trouble getting out of their driveways because of the amount of traffic. And then you've got all the fumes and the dust and the noise. The health organization tells you that the reason most places don't work on it because the manifestation of the health problems in the people is usually after they get a little older, that from what they have received as children. They get lung problems. They have COPD. Just all kinds of things that happen. And then they came out with a study that says the nanoparticles from automobile fumes attack your immune system. We just went through a pandemic. We just went through a pandemic. So it's attacking the immune system, making it more difficult for residents to even fight off a pandemic. I'm asking for help. I'm asking for something to be done. It's not going to harm one single driver for this problem to be fixed. But if it's not fixed, the residents of the Florida Park Drive are going to continue to be harmed. Please, do something about this. Don't do another study. Don't do a project that's not going to actually fix the problem. We've been deceived many times. Projects are going to fix it, but it didn't. It increased the traffic. So please, fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will the next speaker come up, please?
Good morning. Dennis McDonald. I came down to talk to you about the salary issue that I have watched some of your meetings. And I wanted Mr. Mayor to have an understanding here. You're trying to compare apples and oranges. You're trying to compare state jobs, jobs that the school board and the county commissioners with your job. It's a completely different scenario. You are certainly aware of the fact that those salaries are set by the state legislature for everyone in Florida. So if you're in Miami-Dade and you're a city or you're a Board of County Commissioner, you get paid the same as you would in Martin or some other county that's certainly much, much smaller. So they have to do everything for the state on state consensus. So it's unfair, really, to even draw that into comparison. But I would like to compare something in our own county right here with other municipalities. So essentially, what you're saying is you guys are worth $34,000 more than Catherine Robinson, who's been the mayor or will be the mayor for almost two decades down in Benel. On the other hand, when you want to talk about council members, we just had Jane Mealy reelected, and probably by the time she's out of office, she'll serve 20 years. She serves, the salary is essentially commensurate to what you guys are getting. So, and then you say, well, you can't get really good knowledgeable people, okay, that will take these jobs and run for them. Have you forgotten about Ken Bryan? Ken Bryan was a county commissioner and the chairman of the county commission in another county for a number of years. So your argument just doesn't hold water. But if you want to go back and if you want to mix the, what is established by the state in salaries, as in with yours, then I would offer this. We pay almost $60,000 to the Board of County Commissioners for that position, okay? The majority of those guys have given us the worst real estate deals ever in any county that I've ever known. Okay? Stop and think about it. Whether they were buying, selling, or leasing land, it was a disaster. We can start with the Sheriff's Department. We can go to Sears. We can go on and on. We can go to Bing's Landing. How about that one? Okay? So when you compare yourself to those guys, don't do it, because they've got a really bad track record. And if you want to get paid more money, then go run for the county commission seat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. My name is Sims Jones. And, well, I was a little hesitant about coming up here because I am running for office. And usually, I have my wife call the city when I have problems at my house. Now, a builder built a house to the left of me, if you face my house, and he built it to such an elevation that every time it rains now, I get flooded in my property. I had the engineer come out to my house because the swell is filling up with water. I have a little lake in front of my house now. And he told me that the swell is the right height, and mine is too low. So if I want to fix this situation, I can put some dirt down and then put some sod down and raise up my swell so that the water can run through. But the water ran through fine before they built the house next to me. So I called the city before the house was even sold and was still being built. Well, the new owners are in the house. They've been there about a month, a month and a half. And the inspector told the new owner that it's their responsibility to fix the situation. So now my brand-new neighbor is not talking to me. And, you know, but I figure it was just a swell, and they told me, oh, well, we'll get to it within two years. And I've heard that before. But I just, you know, I just let it go because I'm trying to behave myself. This last storm we have left me a lake in my backyard, behind my shed, along the left side of my house. I now have a lake when it rains, because all the water from the new house next door is running into my property. So now, in order to fix this situation, I'm going to have to get a whole lot of dirt, put on my property, to have my property graded and re-sodded. And that should have been caught by the inspector when the house was being permitted. I don't know what happened. I don't know who's at fault. But now, it's a problem to me, because now I have a lake around my house. I have a lake in front of my house. I have a new neighbor who's upset with me because I complained about the lake. And who do I blame? The PEP system just had to get emptied out because the water that ran in on the side of my house filled up my PEP system. So like I said, I'm at which end. It's getting ready to cost me, I don't know how much, and I don't know where to go from here. So I just want to let you know, this is the situation that I have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Darlene Shelley. I live in Hidden Lakes in Palm Coast. On February 25th, there were four fatality crashes in Flagler County. On Wednesday, March 2nd, there were two more horrific crashes near Hidden Lakes on Old Kings Road and Town Center Boulevard. The traffic in Palm Coast increases daily, and there's no plan to safely accommodate the influx. To preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the local residents, we ask you to consider a moratorium on the commencement of development on the unimproved two-lane Old Kings Road. It's our belief that the current traffic far exceeds the capacity for safe operating levels on Old Kings Road. Adding any more demand will result in many more crashes and fatalities on this dangerous road filled with S-turns and blind curves. We ask you to strongly consider halting commercial development on this section of Old Kings Road until the four-lane widening project is completed. Traffic surveys, noise decibel level testing, and impact studies must be performed and analyzed to prove the feasibility and safety of these proposals before any construction commences. Then, we can assess the needs and utilize smart growth that will not have a negative impact on the surrounding residents or affect their health, safety, and welfare. Please consider this moratorium and do your due diligence before allowing one tree to be felled on the unimproved Old Kings Road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker, please?
Good morning, members up front. Most important members here in the audience.
Please address the...
I just wanted to say hello, being friendly here in Palm Coast. Mayor, I have just one question. Do we have any council...
Sir, please identify yourself for the file.
I'm sorry?
I said, please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Eugene Walker. I'm here in good old Palm Coast. Mr. Mayor, do we have any council meetings for the evening? We do? Okay. I'm new. I just moved in four years ago. I did a lot of research, and I moved into this area for one reason. I could afford it, and I want to stay that way. Everybody's talking about pricing, and yeah, that's a big thing. Senior citizens, you know, you got a 5.9 raise, big deal. Your medical went up. Everything else went up. Your 5.9 don't mean anything. We need to think here. I understand you'd like to have a raise. Fine. It's nice to find out that it is going to a ballot, because a lot of information in this town isn't thrown out there. A lot of people don't know these things. We have to be a little more informed so we can come up here and understand things. Yeah, you can have a raise, put it on the ballot, reasonable if we can afford it, and the times can afford it. Not reasonable if we can't. And if you want to raise, every member on this board, if you're reelected, if it goes through, then you get it. Not while you're sitting now. Second of all, I'm hearing about the housing. Every time I turn around, there's a new house going up. I don't mind housing. I'm looking at the large land being destroyed and these apartments and condos going in. I moved from a town 12 years ago that started this condo and apartment stuff. They turned into our little problem areas. I'm not saying everybody's bad, but sometimes things don't work out the way we think they're going to. So please be considerate of that. Business is your money. Business doesn't cost you any more services or schools. Business doesn't cost you any more services or schools. Let's look for businesses. We have enough houses out here. We have enough of new development going up. We need businesses, that's where your money comes from. Start looking at some of your ordinances to make it a little easier for a business to move in here. Small business, mom and pop, big business. That's it. Everybody out here knows we got to make the money to support the town. Thank you for your time and good luck.
And thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. My name is Christopher Chartier. I understand the council wanted to give themselves raises. Many Americans feel underpaid and would if they could, but an exorbitant raise of this magnitude...
I'm sorry, sir, did you identify yourself for the record?
I did.
Okay.
Christopher Chartier. Again, I understand the council wanted to give themselves raises. Many Americans feel underpaid and would if they could, but an exorbitant raise of this magnitude is wrong. And to be honest with you, it's a surefire way to turn off registered voters. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you ran your last campaign on public safety. Uh, to be honest with you, I don't know, can't think of anything that's more safe than caring about the children of this city. And I see them every day, they sit on street corners in the dark, waiting for school buses as drivers disobey the speed limit signs, uh, and no enforcement is applied to it. Third, the city is voted as the best retirement city in the country. People move here because here isn't like there. But if you keep granting building permits for multifamily housing and encouraging big box stores to come here, here will become just like there without the infrastructure and our beautiful town won't be the same except for well-compensated developers who don't care as much about Palm Coast as its residents do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please. I think the lady is first.
Cindy McDowell. And I'm speaking about the raise. And while I volunteer for lots of causes, I do it because I want to, I have a passion for it, but I also help speak for people who can't speak for themselves. And I think that's why you all do this, it's to make our community better and it should be based upon money. You yourself were appointed, not elected. I believe seven months serving in your position doesn't deserve 365%. I believe maybe a study of relative villages of the same size, from what I can tell is around 22,000 to 25,000. I think then, when the economy warrants it, let's try to put it on the ballot for a vote. I think right now times are tough. I'm in the real estate industry, I have a lot of people that earn less than $1,000 a month that cannot find affordable housing. I think combination of gas, food is just not the right time. And I'm asking you to reconsider this and just put it on the back burner when times are a little bit better, but this isn't the right time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
My name is Dan Bryant, I live at Crossgate Court. On the subject of safety that was just brought up on the previous speakers, I wanted to address the, uh, status of pedestrian bike path on Simron and the plans to get that done. Uh, over the last few months, we've had a lot more, uh, traffic, especially construction vehicles and tradesman vehicles. There's just about every lot on the Simron, on the peninsula that is served by Simron, that's the only way you can get in there, uh, is getting developed now. And, uh, with this increased traffic has become an increased concern for the, uh, safety now that the weather has gotten better and people are walking outside in the mornings and the evenings, uh, it's getting a little bit concerning. Um, I was very happy to see a, uh, speed monitor cart was deployed, uh, on Simron, I believe on Sunday or maybe Monday, early Monday morning, uh, which I think is a good start. It would be nice, of course, to have a more permanent, uh, speed indicator as the ones on Casper Drive or one of the other roads have to be more permanent. But hopefully all of this is leading towards, uh, a bicycle path or a pedestrian path alongside of Simron. Uh, I did see about two weeks ago some surveyor crew out there and I'm hoping that they were associated with that because I know a firm has been contracted to do that. And, um, and not simply for, it was surveying for yet another house, uh, lot being developed. But, um, I think we're, I'm anxious to, uh, hear the proposals by the, uh, firm that was contracted for this work. And I believe there's supposed to be a, uh, meeting at some point in the future on that. So we look forward to, uh, seeing that and I think it's a very needed amenity and, uh, I will, uh, anxiously await, uh, the report back. Thank you much.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Celia Puglisi, I live in Palm Coast, 91. I am here, first of all, I want to appreciate as a resident, Mr. Eddie Brankinio lobbying for a construction moratorium for affordable housing or multifamily, whatever you want to call it. Regarding that, as a resident, I am very offended from last Friday's diatribe of Mr. Greg Blosette, director of the recently resuscitated Flagler Chamber of Commerce, as they, as, as he had the audacity to undermine the construction moratorium requested by Councilman Brankinio and by the residents of Palm Coast while also accusing him and probably us in a very unjustified manner of prejudice regarding this, his mentioning of the real problems that some of the affordable incentive-benefited housing is enduring as reported in Town Center and elsewhere with drug-related crime, et cetera, caught by the sheriff lately. Actually, after build, the rent is far from affordable to our local workforce. Residents asking for moratorium in construction and our city have nothing to learn from the organization that over the years was brought up to bankruptcy and disbanded in 2020, no matter who at the head, who was at the head. And just because they refuse to hear or care for the small businesses like mine, members, except the big developers' interest is still represented on its board today. Palm Coast has a lot of land to be developed, but those we elect to represent us need to plan this growth with realistic common sense, not done yet. We are being packed like sardines in our insufficient roads by the increased traffic and our law enforcement units are not enough. Our sewer and stormwater system need update and our water times comes out yellow from our faucets. Our utility rates keep on going up to fund 22 million sewer treatment plants in the north end of Palm Coast to serve new developments with meagre or exempted impact fees. Meanwhile, developers, millionaire expansion west of Route 1 is being consent intended to pass now into vacant lands to benefit developers that yet have not even paid their current meagre impact fees. The same impact fees asked to be raised by the school board to our students' education and refused so far also by the, the, the county. At least in last Tuesday meeting, a Simron resident with our sidewalk dodging speeders while walking or cycling questioned, like I am doing today, my spending, why spending millionaire expansions on vacant, vacant lands west of Route 1 other than addressing the much-needed Simron sidewalk? Why excuses when the DOT funded the FPD sidewalk? I lived there, they came and built it and it was a matter of safety by so many going in circles now regarding a foot approval or not by some Simron front lawn owners. Can we see the right way map on Simron and stop the excuses? Please. Also, what happened with the waste pro, I've been here and I've been asking for that and I have here 125 residents...
Please, please finish your comment.
...saying their excellent service we have this year.
To the clerk, please.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please. The speaker has already had a, a chance to speak?
I have, but I have a different topic, if I may. You've had other speakers speak more than once, so I don't know why you would discriminate against me.
I'm just checking with council for a moment.
Tony, can you talk first? Yeah, what the heck? Yeah.
I don't think so, unless you want to open an exception, but I don't think, I don't think they meant more than three minutes.
Thank you. It's not like...
So the speaker, please. So the way I read the instructions are, the, um, speakers are not permitted to speak on the, are permitted three minutes to speak on, uh, an item. They're not permitted to speak, uh, more than three minutes on a single item. So yes, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Three minutes is certainly not enough to talk on all the different topics that I'd like to speak about. And I planned on speaking just once, but I just wanted to let the board and the mayor know that I've been in communication with FDOT, trying to find ways to avoid seeing deaths and fatalities and accidents, uh, near my community of Hidden Lakes. Again, it's Darlene Shelley in Hidden Lakes.
I'm sorry, you're, you're speaking on the same subject you spoke earlier, I was pretty clear about that. I was offering you the opportunity to speak on a different subject, you agreed you would speak on a different subject.
Correct.
So if you have a different subject, I would ask you to hold your comment till the end where you'll have another chance to speak in public participation.
I understand that and this is a different topic. It regards sign, signage on Old Kings Road to keep it safer for the residents.
I believe you spoke on safety on Old Kings Road in the first statement.
I did not speak about signs.
So I'm going to expire your, I'm going to expire your time at this time. If you would like to come back at the end, uh, speak on public comment on a separate issue, you're welcome to.
Okay, it is a separate issue, but I will honor your authority.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Council, I'm Mike Norris, I live in the B-section. Just to clarify what the, the council said for the city, it's not going to be on the ballot, it's an ordinance, meaning you guys have passed that for that raise, okay? I've been here since 2000...
If, if I may, sir, just, just, just to be helpful, if, council would just to, to clarify, should...
Let me clarify because, can everybody hear me okay? Thank you. Okay, I want to clarify that what I said, that is, it is going to be an ordinance that comes before the city council.
Exactly.
They have to consider it, you know, discuss it and take whichever action they're going to. As far as when any raise, if that, you know, if a, um, ordinance passed, that would not go into effect until the term at least six months out after the next election. So it's not an immediate thing, I just want to clarify what's in the charter, okay?
The question is, the question is, will it be on the ballot or is it going to be an ordinance? You guys pass the ordinances, not the city, the city doesn't vote on ordinances, correct?
The city charter provides that compensation for the city council is set by ordinance.
By ordinance, meaning not voted on by the citizens?
Correct.
Very, okay, so we're clear now?
Yep.
We're clear now, we're clear now that it's going to be an ordinance and it's not going to be on the ballot.
Correct.
Please pause my time, Mr. Mayor.
And if I could just come, if we could pause this time for one moment, can we clarify with council just that this ordinance would actually, I assume, would be, so it doesn't have to go to the ballot because any change in, in city charter usually requires...
It's not, I'm sorry.
No, understood.
Councilmember clueless. Uh, but it's not a change in the charter. The charter is what provides how the compensation is set for the council and the charter in section six, subsection A, provides that, um...
Explicit, explicit number.
That it is by ordinance and then that it goes into effect after, let me just read it, verbatim, how about that?
Please read it so, uh, you'll save everyone the time to research it on their own.
All right, it says compensation, I'm going to pick this up. The council members and mayor shall receive compensation as established by ordinance. Such compensation shall not take effect until the date of commencement of the terms of council members elected at the next regularly scheduled election that follows the adoption of said ordinance by at least six months.
But, so could you also read the part that explicitly states the dollar values were, were, uh, paid out? Because when we did a charter review, uh, back in 2018, I'm pretty sure that...
Council, councilman, if I may, those, I think that was set prior to incorporation of the city in 1999, the original, um, uh, pay scale of the, of city council.
Definitely, yeah, it hasn't changed since 1999 for sure, but I know in the city charter explicitly states the city council salaries and mayor salary.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know, what are you asking me to look up, Mr.?
The main, the main question is to ask...
I'm sorry, sir, I, we'll get, we'll get you, it won't, it won't affect your time.
Thank you.
Councilman, just so, so you asked if we would, if council would continue and finish reading the rest of that section of the city charter, which specifies the, um...
Expenses?
Know the exact salary that were...
Salary amounts are, are, are in the, uh...
I'm also just conveying this to the public so they understand where I'm coming from too, there's no deception on my part here.
It doesn't, it doesn't say anything in the charter about it being a ballot measure for pay increases for the city mayor or the city council.
Correct, but since it's explicitly in the charter, I do believe that it would require an amendment to the charter and that was my stance and that's what we learned from the charter review in 2018. So I was just clarifying with council.
Okay, so right now, it's not going to be a ballot measure, measure, it's just by ordinance, which is passed by the city council and the mayor.
Correct, because that's what the city charter provides.
So just so everybody in the city understands that you can vote yourself a, a raise. Clarified, is that clarified?
The city charter provides that city council, you know...
Okay.
Sets their compensation by ordinance, so...
Okay, so it's not going to be a ballot measure?
Correct.
Okay, you can start my time again if you want.
It's explicitly in the, if it's explicitly...
Okay, I'm Mike Norris, I'm a, I'm a small business owner, I have two...
The clerk, start the time again, please.
I have two, two small businesses in the city, my, my wife owns a pet care service and I own a Peyton pressure washing service. Retired military, 24 years of service, have a undergraduate degree in political science, advanced degrees in human resources, uh, leadership and management. And just so the people of Palm Coast understand, the, uh, the mean income or the median income in Palm Coast is $54,000 a year. The per capita income is $26,000 a year. So what you're asking, Mr. Mayor, is you're asking for, uh, your salary to be 86% of the median income. City council would be 7, uh, 73% of, of, per, of median income in this, in this, in the, uh, city. So I, I, I can't grasp it, I don't understand it, and I think it's terrible that you would take that approach. There's no way, so, um, as a part-time employee, the mayor make $24, $24 an hour, city council $23 an hour. As a part-time employee, for, uh, 20 hours a week, uh, 20-hour work week, you make $48 an hour. It's not reasonable. And, and I think, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to work my best to get all of you out of office if you pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Please, no more outbursts. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Tom Shea and I live in the C-section. And I am a little bit confused about the process, so forgive me, some of these comments were prepared prior to, and now I'm even more confused. It seems that you can vote yourself a raise and those are the comments I'm directing to you today. So forgive me if I have a slight misunderstanding of the process. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the mayor today. Public service is very noble and your efforts to do so are appreciated. With that in mind, I find it necessary to remind all of you that you work for us, the taxpayer, and it's time that you at least started listening to the taxpayer. Council of five people, currently four and a mayor, if I understand things correctly, is deciding to give themselves a pay raise. The raise in question is completely inappropriate as it equates to what I consider by Florida pay standards, a very good... pay standards, a very good salary, especially if you are retired and it's a supplemental income. This is an extremely poor decision to make at this given time, given the current economic uncertainty in the country and the fact that many families are struggling to get by. Getting the raise done in some way without raising taxes is nothing more than a bait and switch. The community will pay by fewer services or in some other way initially, and then the following years, it will just become the norm and budgeted, budgeted for and paid for by the taxpayer anyway. But rest assured, something else will have to be sacrificed. While I do believe a modest raise is appropriate for your efforts, these numbers are staggering, and just because other municipalities may get paid more does not mean that you should be paid more, let alone the process with which it is achieved. If three out of five people vote for a raise, it's a done deal, that is horribly offensive to the people who actually pay that salary. All of you knew what the job paid when you took it, and that is why it is called public service, as most public servants sacrifice a lot of themselves for their community. I don't want to sound unappreciative for the time you put in, which I am sure is far more than most of us are aware, are aware of, and that is sacrifice, and that is what you are doing. You are giving of yourself for your community. I often receive emails from the Human Resource Department, Flagler County, and I notice quite frequently that the Flagler County Sheriff's Department is always looking for deputies all the time, and for several years now, I can see why, and have noticed that this city is getting very bad in terms of violent crime, and that crime should be one of your priorities. It is often written in the observer that it is difficult to come up with the funds to hire sheriffs, and your proposed pay raise.
The speaker, please wrap up their comments, please. Please wrap up your comments, your three minutes are up.
My three minutes are up?
Uh-huh.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if you truly believe that you deserve $45,000 per year, I suggest you do a ride along with a Flagler County sheriff because that is their starting pay. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank, uh, thank you for your comment. Will the next speaker please approach?
Good morning, I'm Preston Zep, I'm one of the historians for this area. And being that, I was able to find in ITT in 1978, they wrote something that kind of goes along with a moratorium thing. I won't read the whole thing because it's a big book. But experience has shown that without adequate planning controls, such a massive population influx can have disastrous effects. At worst, settlement could come in the form of strip highway development, patterns of rampant scattering, and without means of protecting the natural systems and without provisions for new schools, recreation areas, or other amenities so important to pleasant community living, while natural landscape features become eroded, polluted, or disappeared. The demands for the extension of roads, utilities, public services could impose a heavy burden on the existing residents, and they would stand to lose both ways. All we see is all this construction going on. Like I said, I'm a historian. I worked up in the woods in the north side of Flagler County. You see, 1999, this county was actually first settled in 1765. Where I work at, there was a sawmill. I have never seen anybody from the city come out there. It's a resource that we have to bring people in, to bring money in, and it just gets neglected between the sawmill and US1's a new development. In the master site files for the state, there's three historic sites listed. Through research, there's five more that are completely destroyed right now. This is Flagler County history. This is the natives' history. Native Flagler, Flaglerites, Flaglerians. But it doesn't matter, as long as we're building new houses and boxes and whatever. Kind of think of John Mitchell, they paved Paradise to put up a parking lot. Our saying used to be find your Florida. Now it's find your house in the middle of all the other houses. So a moratorium on building, absolutely. What's it doing for us? That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I realize I've already been up here, but this is like seconds that I have. My name's Paula Lewis, I'm in the C section. Recently, I found out about a discount that us citizens of the community were supposed to be able to be, able to take part in. That was with Waste Pro for recycling. I never found out about it. I spoke with other members of the community who also never knew about it. You need to get this information out to us when there are discounts or other things that we could take advantage of so that we can.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Dennis McDonald. Sitting here listening to some of the comments that are being made, there's something that I've come across. I've been working on what's stealing our elections, something called ERIC, that 31 states are involved in. But in doing that, in doing the research, I paid Jay Gardner, our appraiser, to compile a list for me that might be helpful for the city, and that was the list of, I asked him for, all residential properties in the, in the city limits of Palm Coast. And what I got back was astounding, okay? He has listed 29, just almost 30,000 residential locations in Palm Coast. Now, having gone through, being married to a school board member, I'm very much aware of what the discussions that were going on with concurrency and the fees that were being changed and such like that. And out of that discussion came some numbers from Patty Bott, who works for the school system, who is just excellent, and, and knowing, you know, what direction the, the area is going in. And so the bottom line is, they're saying there's about 14,000 lots, single-family lots, in Palm Coast, okay, that are yet to be built on, okay? So the spread here is 16,000. And so to Mr. Brankino's point about putting a moratorium on, we've got 16,000, what appears to be, if Jay's list is correct, okay, we've got 16,000 apartments in the offing ready to go. Thank Mr. Brankino for me.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good morning, Robert McDonald, City of Palm Coast. Last week, I came to the meeting and I respectfully requested to know how much money the city has already paid in lieu of what the money that the Green Lion should have been paying. And I also requested to find out if there was a list of any other businesses or types of businesses that the city might be paying instead of the actual business owner paying. Well, as of this morning, I haven't gotten any response yet. Now, I don't understand why, and I'm quite sure at some point the city will inform me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing, yes, sir.
Mark Lewis, Palm Coast, brief comment. I've asked a couple of times and also filled out written questionnaires and turned them in. How much of the stormwater fee is being used for Phase One of the new utility maintenance facility at the end of Matanzas? I, I heard there was a part of $2.5 million was from the stormwater fee. I would like someone in cities to, to please let me know how much of the stormwater fee from last year is being used for the construction of the maintenance facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any last speakers for public comment this morning? Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time, and I will direct the city manager to take note of each question or ask for information and be sure that staff responds to each speaker in the, you know, shortest timeline possible. I'll ask city council members if they would like to comment on the discussion this morning before we move on with the agenda.
Yep, absolutely, please. And I would like to apologize for my misinformation. In 2018, we had our city charter review from the city charter that was established in 2002, and in that process, one of the recommendations that was put on the ballot in 2018 was for the removal of the explicit salaries, which were in Section 6A, Item 3. Item 2 is reserved, but I was referencing the 2002 city charter, which in 2018 we overhauled, and it removed the explicit dollar values in Section 6A. So I'd just like to apologize for my misinformation. I was under the assumption that this would have to go before the electorate in, in the hole, because it was on our city charter, but that's not the case. But still, the fact remains that this wasn't a vote to pass a raise on our behalf. It's for legislation to be processed by our council to be brought before us, and I just wanted to apologize for my misinformation referencing the 2002 city charter.
Thank you, councilman. Vice member, I know, any comment?
I just want to say that, just a couple of points. Regarding our, you know, salaries, everybody knows what my opinion is. I actually, like the lady said, this is a civic duty, and we have to stop, we have to get onto these people's shoes to know exactly what they're feeling. I mean, I could tell you, under my salary that I get from my pension, I've had, not had a raise for the last 12 years, so I could sympathize with you. I could tell you that if it was up to me, there would not be an increase on our pays. Actually, I would make it symbolically, okay? But that's my opinion, and any type of raises or anything at this moment, at this point, I don't think is appropriate. But once again, that's only my opinion. The other thing is, uh, I will be answering at, at the end with this council by city councils, not any agenda. I'll be answering the, the Chamber of Commerce and a few other people. And if, Ms. Cody, if you decide to stay until the end, I would like to make sure that I could, you, you hear my comments? And if possible, if you want to sit with me, I'll sit with you, especially regarding the affordable and affordable housing.
Thank you.
There's a difference in between affordable housing and workforce housing, which is a word that I haven't heard much. But then again, at, at the end, if you don't mind, I'll be glad to speak with anyone which suit, but then again, I will have my comments, which I think they will be more appropriate at, at the matters, not on the, on the agenda. Trust me, I will be answering a few people.
Thank you, vice mayor. Councilman Danko, any comment at this time? Good. With that, then, we will move forward with the agenda. The next item is our minutes. I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the city council for March the 1st, 2022, a business meeting, and March the 8th, 2022, a workshop meeting. Does the clerk have the?
I have the motion.
The motion, and there's a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk has the vote.
Motion passes 5 to 0, 4 to 0, sorry.
Next item is our proclamations and presentations. We have one proclamation this morning, and it'll be my pleasure to present it. Excuse my back. Thank you. Whereas multiple my, multiple myeloma, or myeloma, the second most common blood cancer worldwide and the fastest rising hematologic cancer is a disease of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur at multiple sites. And whereas in the United States, life expectancy for those who are diagnosed with multiple myeloma ranges from four and 10 years, with close to 13,000 people having lost their lives just this past year. And whereas, still with the challenges of applying therapies that include combinations of chemotherapy, radiation, and stem cell transplants, there is no known cure for this debilitating form of cancer. And whereas, for the past eight years, Mrs. Hack and her family have advocated for city council to annually recognize March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Whereas, even as Jenny Hack lived for her most beautiful life until February 2020, she courageously continued to provide comfort and kindness as an ambassador for the Palm Coast Multiple Myeloma Support Group. And whereas, her warrior-like participation in five experimental clinical trials made her a pioneer for guiding experts to seek to achieve an early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for myeloma patients. And whereas, thanks to the people like Jenny Hack, Palm Coast is continually committed to increasing awareness of multiple myeloma and encouraging private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of March 2022 be officially designated as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in the City of Palm Coast. Signed this 15th day of March 2022 by myself, Mayor, City of Palm Coast. So it's our pleasure, and we look forward to helping you all increase this awareness, and especially for the people mentioned here. So our best to you all, thank you. So let me give that to you.
My name is Arnold Levine. I just want to mention that, that the Palm Coast does have a Multiple Myeloma Support Group. We are just a small number of the entire group, and, and it's important that everybody, everybody get checked out because the symptoms are hidden in the beginning, and then as it, as it gets more serious, there's bone damage, there is blood, blood disorders, and the sooner, like anything else, the sooner that we get diagnosed and treated, the longer we live. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this morning is a presentation regarding employee recognition. Ms. Kershaw, if you would.
Good morning, mayor and city council and everybody here. I get the privilege of presenting some employee spotlights that are, are great team, that's just going above and beyond to serve our residents. I am presenting on behalf of my team, Human Resources and the BAM team, so we have a little video for you.
I would like to recognize the members of the Strategic Action Plan Team here at the City of Palm Coast, who were recently recognized by the International City Management Association with the Certificate of Distinction. This award acknowledges their efforts in still a culture performance management. This award acknowledges their efforts in still a culture performance management utilizing data-driven decision-making and promoting transparency. This marks the seventh year in a row that the city has been recognized with this honor. Congratulations again to the entire team.
I want to recognize Animal Control Officer Casey Egan, who helped transport Phoebe, an emotional support dog, to a safe place after her owner was involved in a minor car accident. Thank you, Casey, for looking out for our residents and our four-legged friends.
I would like to recognize Lieutenant Jason Wagner, who recently celebrated 25 years with the Palm Coast Fire Department. I'm proud to have been working alongside you for the duration of your time with Palm Coast Fire Department. This milestone is indicative of your commitment to our department and the community here in Palm Coast. Thank you for all you do. I'd also like to recognize Tim Wilson, volunteer firefighter with the Palm Coast Fire Department, who recently was promoted to volunteer battalion chief. Your commitment to our volunteer program is an immeasurable impact to our community and our volunteer program. Thank you, Tim.
To our special projects team, I'd like to thank you for the work you did repairing two pedestrian bridges along Rimfire Drive. Your attention to detail while conducting these repairs brings new life to these bridges and will keep them looking great for years to come. I also want to send a shout-out to our maintenance team for the great job they did in cutting back foliage on Evans Drive that was in danger of creating a line-of-sight obstruction for our drivers. The safety of our residents is paramount, and your commitment to their safety is greatly appreciated. Thank you for what you do.
Today, I want to recognize Kevin Karshner, Mechanical Lead of our water operations in our utility department. Kevin has many duties and responsibilities in our department. His latest innovation involved designing and engineering electrical control panels with variable frequency drives. This helps to improve efficiency while reducing costs. Great job, Kevin. Congratulations go out to Anna Patrick for passing the DEP exam. This is the exam to become a B-level water treatment plant operator. This test is well-known for being a very difficult test to pass. Ms. Patrick is a high achiever, and we are grateful to have her on our city team. I also want to congratulate Anthony Textira for passing the Florida Department of Environmental Drinking Water Class C exam today. Great job for getting this done in a short timeframe. We can't wait for you to be eligible to cover some water treatment plant shifts. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the great work of our crew members that responded to emergency utility breaks in both the B and L sections recently. Your steadfast response and commitment to resolving these problems to quickly restore service to our residents does not go unnoticed. Great job, guys.
I want to recognize Cindy Apicio and Carol Collier for the outstanding service they provided residents who called in needing assistance. They were able to see the problem through and come to a quick resolution, for which the residents were very thankful. I also want to shine a light on an entire customer service team. As we were recently presented the 2022 National Customer Service Organization of the Year Award. Your teamwork and commitment to our residents is incredible, and I want to thank you for all that you do every day.
I want to recognize our entire financial services department, as we were recently awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Outstanding Achievement Award in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. These reports were reviewed by independent panels of impartial judges. Achieving these awards brings credibility to the organization and our fiscally responsible approach to the operations of our city government. This honor reflects our determination and commitment to achieving great results for the city of Palm Coast, and I want to recognize the entire team for all that you do.
Ms. Kershaw, thank you for the presentation. I just want to point out that the chief stepped out for a moment during his piece, so we watched it for him. What I wanted to bring to your attention is not only his comments regarding his employees and their promotions, but all of the many other comments from the other directors and their staff and employees are testimonial to the succession planning, succession planning that we use in the city of Palm Coast, which is managed by our city manager, which ensures that we have continuity and the best talent possible to run this city day in and day out. The only negative I have is that, please, have your folks smile bigger when they are talking about the fine work that their employees do.
I just want to thank you, thank you, every single one of our personnel, staff. You guys, I've seen you in action. You guys are fabulous, phenomenal. The only worry I have is with all directors, one of these days, we're going to have the Screen Actors Guild come over here and make sure you join the union, because you guys are doing a fine job when you're doing these things. So I, once again, I thank you all. I think you all are doing a phenomenal job, phenomenal job. Thank you.
Councilman?
Eddie just said everything I was going to say, so I'll just say.
Councilman?
Out of 10, Wood, counsel again.
Very good. All right. Congratulations to all of you. Before, before we begin today on the next item of the agenda, I want to take a moment to discuss city council processes relating to approval or denial of items presented to city council at all business meetings. For each workshop, city council receives a comprehensive overview of each item. At that time, it is council's opportunity to provide questions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the scheduled business meetings. The purpose of a business meeting is for council to review and weigh all the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented, both at the prior workshop and today. All right. With that, we'll proceed to our item G on the agenda, which is resolutions, and I will ask council to please read the first resolution into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution 2022 for fiscal year 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report as presented by the external audit firm, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And is there a presentation, please, Ms. Alves?
Yes, hi, good morning, Mayor, City Council. Today, we have with us your external auditors, James Halloran and Webb Shepherd with James Moore &amp; Company, and they're here to present the results of the audit that was performed on 2021.
Gentlemen, please proceed.
Good morning, everyone. James Halloran here at James Moore &amp; Company CPAs. Very happy to present your audit today. We've done your audit for a number of years. Also, I would like to give you a little background on James Moore &amp; Company. We audit over 60 cities throughout the state of Florida. Some of the ones surrounding you city-wise would be Orange Beach, Deland, New Smyrna, Edgewater. In addition to that, we audit our special districts as well, like St. John's Water Management District that you guys have the fun of dealing with at times, as well as Northwest Water Management District and Southwest Water Management District. And of course, today would not be possible. Of course, we only audit the financial statements. It's Helena and Shannon, the one that put together, you know, if you print it out, the book looks like this, rather thick. So it's really their hard work that makes this possible for you guys to have your financial statements, and then we're able to come in and audit them. With me is Webb Shepherd today. He's actually going to do the presentation, as he's been working on your job for, actually, as long as you've been with the firm, you've been working on the job, so quite a bit of time, so I'm going to give him that opportunity today.
Thank you, James. I'm Webb Shepherd, Director with James Moore &amp; Company. I also wanted to say thank you to Helena and Shannon, all the finance department, because I know it's not easy. Thank you for putting up with us. We asked for a lot of information, and thank you for helping us get it so timely and efficiently and get through our process. We'll talk a little about the independent auditors' reports. So the first item there is the report on the financial statements. A few key items to note on that. It's an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion that we can provide, and that's the report that you want to see there. It discusses in the audit report that we provide a top-down approach to auditing management's financial statements. It discusses our independence, that we are independent from staff and management. We work for you, city council, not for management. Our responsibility is to form and express an opinion that your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next item there is the internal control report of financial reporting. That one's required by government auditing standards. It states that we consider internal control, but do not provide an opinion on its operating effectiveness. We found no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance as a result of our audit procedures. Again, that's the best report we can offer, and that's the one you really want to see there. The next item there is the single audit report. It's required anytime you have more than $750,000 in federal or state awards. You had $2.7 million in federal, $5.2 million in state in 2021. We had no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance found as a result of our audit procedures. And again, that's the report that you want to see there. I will say that all of these no material weaknesses and no instances of noncompliance, that's really a testament to your finance department as well. We look very hard, and we haven't found any this year, so that's saying something. As James said, we do audit quite a few other cities, and that's not always the case, so... The next slide here. The next item is the management letter required by the auditor general. That requires us to look at certain things, primarily financial condition assessment and other key metrics. We found no exceptions as a result of our audit procedures, so that's the letter you want to see there. The next item is the examination report. It states that you're in compliance with specific investment policy statutes. No exceptions found as a result of our audit procedures, so... The last item there is, there's also a separate CRA audit issued as required by Florida statutes. No additional comments in regards to that as well. A little about your financial health. All of your funds are in compliance or exceed your fund balance policies. That's in Note 17 to the financial statements. Your overall financial condition assessment is favorable for 2021. This is your general fund, the categories in your fund balance here. These are all mostly comparable, and the increase in unassigned is primarily due to expenditures finishing the year under budget, combined with some increases in tax revenues. Property and sales taxes were up year-over-year, as you know. The committed is the disaster, the disaster reserve there, and the assigned is a budgeted use of fund balance in next year, so... A little more about the general fund. The key takeaway here is that GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. They recommend 60 days or 17%, and you are currently, your unassigned fund balance as a percent of 2022 budgeted expenditures and transfers, you're at 31%. So you're in compliance, you're a little, little over, but that's still, we consider that in compliance. Your other governmental funds here, the restricted is your impact fees, committed is capital If you all want to jump in anytime here and liven it up, feel free.
Like I promised you.
Exciting stuff, I know you're... These are your business-type funds. This is your unrestricted net position for your proprietary funds. The utility fund there increased, your expenses actually increased, but a little less than your rate and customer increases, as you know. Your stormwater fund, you did some system improvements, but you're still planning for future projects and other improvements. The non-major there, that's the planned decrease in your building permits fund, that's why that one went down, and your other internal service funds, as you all are aware of them. This is the same as what we just discussed in the general fund there. Your fund balance policies across your funds here are 10% to 20% of next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out. So the utility fund is 24%, solid waste fund is 20%, and stormwater fund there is 28%. A few financial highlights for the year. So you had a $3 million deficit in the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund, as you're well aware. $6.2 million in ARPA funding received in 2021, and some more coming in 2022, I think. There are a couple of new accounting standards on the horizon. GASB 87 will be effective for fiscal year in '22, and that is the leases standard. That one will require you to capitalize all of your material leases effectively. So the big one for you is, you'll have a big lease receivable there for the city-owned facilities, the cell phone towers there, the land that is leased to the cell phone towers. $258,000 in lease payments received in 2021, and that $5.2 million is to be received in the future through 2040. So that will all be recorded as a big receivable on the books as of next year. You also had, you know, your advances to other funds, that's between the utility fund and Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. As you know, the utility fund collects 5% interest on that loan, so it's not a bad deal. And you all will be affected by that GASB 87. Oh, the SBITA, that's subscription-based IT arrangements, and that one's effective for the year after, FY '23, so... A few more highlights. As you know, your long-term debt, you refunded the 2013 bonds with a 2021 bond. That was average rate of 1.6, which is down from 4.4, and a net present value savings of about $7 million, or 12%, so that's a pretty good deal. Again, a testament to the finance department.
How much was that?
I think it was down about $7 million over the life alone.
A big shout-out to the finance department, yeah.
At the end, at the end.
That's not a bad deal. Your overall long-term debt of the city decreased 5.6 million. As you know, your retirement plans are in Note 11 to the financials, because I know you all read the financials very carefully at night when you go into bed. And the volunteer firefighters carries with it a net pension asset of $2.4 million. The city contributes 17% plus a 2% match there. FRS has 10 employees in it currently. That carries a net pension liability of about $650,000. A couple of things that make you all different, makes this city different and unique, is that all of your other employees are in a defined contribution plan, which have no net pension liability or net pension asset. The city contributes 10% for general employees plus a 2% match. Something else that makes you unique is that you do not have utility taxes or franchise fees taxes, so the revenue diversification there is something that other cities take advantage of. These are a few additional services that James Moore offers, so please keep us in mind if you ever need any assistance. Thank you.
Does that complete your presentation? Mr. Shepherd, a question, the ARPA funding flows from where to where? In other words, does it come directly from the federal government to the city of Palm Coast?
It's directly from the treasury. It's a, it's a direct, you're under federal guidelines for that, even though the check flows through the state. It's a very odd situation, but it is a direct federal grant through treasury, and you got half the money this year, you'll get half here coming up this year.
So my que, thank you. My question is, you all check to make sure that the calculations are done correctly and that we're getting our full, fair share?
The, that is calculated by the federal government as well as the state. So right now, none of that money has been expended. It's all sitting in cash, and it's sitting in an earned liability.
But are you, are you able to confirm the calculation is correct? Not everybody does the arithmetic perfectly.
Correct. We can check that, but that was not part of our audit procedures to verify that number, because we confirmed it directly with the state.
Okay. And are we, based on your audit, do we receive any funds that flow through the county organization that come to the city of Palm Coast? I'm sure we do.
That we did with the CARES Act in the past.
Not, I'm sorry, not regarding just the CARES Act, just in general. Is there funding that flows to the city of Palm Coast from the county?
Not that I'm aware of. The only funding we receive is our property taxes that are collected by the tax collector and then transmitted to the city.
And again, just the same question. I was just kind of challenging how that, how that arithmetic is confirmed to make sure that it's correct. Very good. Okay. The only other point I have, and I'm sorry, I didn't open up. The only other point I have, and I'm sorry, I didn't open up. This exceptional report, I think, you know, you all are in the business, and this is as good a report as you can possibly present and has been for quite some time now. Does this improve our, our lender's relationship? Should we, you know, talk to lenders in the future? Does this give us a better score, an audit report like this?
Yeah, this, anytime you have an unmodified opinion, and as well as no comments for a number of years on internal control issues, it will do well, as well as you guys do present the annual comprehensive financial report, which is a step above what just the state of Florida requires. So the additional items that are in your comprehensive financial report are, you include a statistical section as well as a letter of transmittal, and that's why your bond rating has been dropped the last couple of years. You see your bond rating drop is one of the reasons. And, you know, of course, bond ratings always do well as you continue to pay your, to pay your debt that you have.
So we'd like to tell staff to keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Very good.
And it was a really good time. I mean, as you guys know, interest rates are now creeping back up, so, and in just over the last probably five years, you've probably refinanced every piece of debt you've had.
Excellent.
That you can possibly do. Sometimes there's restrictions, but you guys have been taking advantage of that as the situations arise and allow for under those bond agreements.
Very good. Let me let the city council, any questions or comments?
No, I just want to thank you guys for that in-depth briefing last week, and I really appreciate all the work and effort you put into this. Good job.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I, I just want to, you know, thank you gentlemen for the work you did. I think we had a very colorful meeting when we met last week. I was pretty much informed of what I needed to, and I tried to throw in a few tricky questions. You guys infel for it, so you actually told me the truth, didn't sugarcoat it, and I, to the finance department, I, I don't know what to say anymore about them. You guys are phenomenal, you know, and to prove that, we have somebody who's external, who's independent, to avoid any conflict of interest, which is a word that I'm going to use a little later. But now, this is something that we need. We pay for it, and we are getting our money's worth. I just wish that one specific financier that once in a while comes here with questions, that he would be here today and ask those questions, because this way, he would not be uninformed about certain things. But unfortunately, he's not here today, and the last time he was here in front of me talking to me, I told him exactly that, unfortunately, he's not here. But he want to know something? Great job, great job. Thank you.
Councilman Lufus?
For sure. I would like to thank the gentlemen that we had a meeting last week. It was excellent, and the fact that we can have a report generated that has no opinion and is a favorable rating just speaks to the incredible finance team that we have. And over the last five years, thank you for the exuberant amount of work for which you have put in to be able to refinance the city's debt and be able to reap the rewards and put that money back into our community, so thank you guys. Thank you.
Helena, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Thank you, gentlemen.
And Mayor, I know you weren't able to meet with us, but if you're able to meet with us, just, they can arrange it through, through the city clerk. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, moving on the agenda, next item under G, number five, if council would go ahead and read that in.
Mayor, we needed a vote on the resolution.
I was just going to say, we need to vote.
Ah, I'm sorry, my, my fault. I would ask for a motion to, sorry?
And public comment as well.
Oh, okay, let's open it up to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the resolution just presented? Please come forward now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, come back to the dais. Is there any additional comment by city council?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, a motion to, to approve, and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please by signif, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Does the clerk have the vote?
Motion passes court to zero.
Okay, now I'll ask council to read in the next resolution, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022, Cultural Arts Grants Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving an additional grantee for the cultural arts grant for fiscal year 2022. Authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
We have a presentation?
Yeah, just a couple of slides. So James Hurst, morning mayor in council, James Hurst, Parks and Rec, outdoor recreation manager. So back in September, sorry, back in September, came to you guys, we came to you to approve the cultural arts grant for fiscal year 2021 or '22, and since then, we've had a little bit of an update. I'll go through the slides and I'll, we'll see those updates there. So again, just a little bit of history. We've had this grant, matching grant since 2002. For fiscal year '22, we got an approved budget of $30,000. And then due to a withdrawal of an application, some funds have become available, and that's why we're here today, is to discuss approval of an additional application. This happened in 2015. We had to review and distribute remaining funds, and then we've had two, since the withdrawal of the green room, we've actually had two inquiries with one application will be presented with you guys today. The cultural arts review team met March, March 1st, and went through this admission, and then below, you can see the criteria that we go through. This was, again, when, back in September, we went over this before. And as, in this table here, the new application we're looking for is the Palm Coast Songwriters Festival, and that, and they will, will replace the green room. And that's pretty much it for the presentation. So we're just looking for approval, additional applicant for this year.
Thank you for your presentation.
Nice and quick.
City council, I, I'm assuming all members of city council are familiar with the Songwriters Festival and its history here. Is that correct?
Best show in town.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Songwriters I'm not sure the public is entirely aware, and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary Lubai, Palm Coast resident for the last 15 years, and also one of the founders of the Songwriters Festival. Basically, we started this in 2018. We brought nine hit songwriters from Nashville, and it has blossomed to, this year will be 39 songwriters coming here. We have people that have purchased tickets that live in Washington State, Minnesota, Ohio, Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, North Carolina, and up and down the east coast of Florida, as far south as Fort Lauderdale, and over to the west coast down to Cape Coral, and across the state into Orlando. So needless to say, as the saying goes, we've put Palm Coast on the map. There's a lot of people that didn't, had no idea where we were, including most of the songwriters themselves, and now they're even bringing their wives and spouses and children. In this case, this year, we got one bringing two of his sons even. So we're excited about the momentum, and we appreciate your consideration to support us as we call it the Palm Coast Songwriters Festival, so your, your name's all over it.
So thank you for the, for the information. The real question I want to ask is, how big can this get?
I'm sorry?
How big can this festival get over time?
This, right now, with the momentum we have, I think we're going to have at least 500 people plus here this year. The other nice thing that I forgot about mentioning, one of the reasons why I wanted to get this thing started was to give our citizens here in Palm Coast something special. One of our, the CDD president, former CDD president of Grand Haven, Dr. Davidson said it very well to one of our songwriters a few years ago. He goes, "It's an honor to have you here," and she looked at him and said, "Well, thank you, I appreciate you saying that." And he goes, "No, no, no, you don't understand. We don't get talent like you in Palm Coast. People just don't realize, you know, the level of talent until they come out to it, and then once they see the movie, as the saying goes." So I, I think next year and beyond now, I think this could be 700 to 1,000 people coming in. I, I think that's the potential here. We don't have a facility large enough to handle anything larger than that, but it's a four-day event now, and it's, like I said, it's getting national recognition as well.
Very good.
But on radio shows and national magazines even highlighted there.
Very good, thank you, thank you for the information. Bring everybody up to speed on that, that's pretty exciting, the growth potential. So at this point in time, are there any members of the public that would like to comment
Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. As a new resident, Gary drug me out to, well, not new anymore, but a year ago, when I was still new, Gary drug me out to the Palm Coast Songwriters Festival. Wouldn't be an event that I would attend, I'm not into country music all that much, but being there at the, at that facility at Daytona State College, and having all those songwriters perform their music live, and these are major hits, and hearing the story behind it, and just that feel of what's happening at that amphitheater, I thought was a very, very cool event. Gary gets a lot of heat because this is a personal effort of his that he personally cares about, and now I understand why, because this is a really cool deal. We have a lot of people coming here for this, a lot of interest in it, and for the residents that have an attend, I would strongly encourage you to go and check it out, because it is a super positive event that, that I look forward to continuing to go to for many years, even though I'm not the country music guy, so.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this issue at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come back to the dais for additional discussion. The only other comment I would make is, this would be an example of a beginning of the city's effort to identify arts and culture as important pillar of a balance for the future growth of our city. You know, there are many different factors and pillars that support the successful growth of a city, and art and culture would be one of them. It sounds like the Songwriters Festival could certainly be, you know, a contributing part of that. Any other comments by city council at this time?
I would just like to add to the fact that it is an incredible event, and I wanted to thank personally Mr. Lubai for all of the hard work and effort that he has, you know, blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into this over the years to get it to the level we're at today, and the fact that it's Palm Coast Songwriters Festival, like this is, our name is on this, and it's a tremendous event, and when you see the talent and you hear the stories, it's unbelievable, the amount of number one billboard hits that they have the songwriters there performing, and they tell you the stories behind it, it really is quite the event, and I was pleasantly surprised at how enjoyable it was, and just a tip of my hat to everyone involved.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Lubai for actually putting Palm Coast out there. We being recognized by artists, we all, all of us like some type of music, and I like country music. Thank you for bringing all those people, for the still best talent to retire in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion at this time?
Move to approve.
Take a second.
Have a motion and a, and a second. Any future, any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Motion passes court to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022, the St. Joe Canal partial right-of-way vacation. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving application number 5052 for the partial vacation of St. Joe Canal right-of-way adjacent to the southerly boundary of land at One Florida Park Drive South, and being parcel number 41-11-31-0000-01040-0010, located in Government Section 41, Township 11 South, Range 31 East, Flagler County, Florida. Providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, providing for recorded, recording, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Hoover, your time is, is ticking quickly now.
Good morning, Bill Hoover from the Planning Division. This is sort of a unique thing we don't see very often. I've only seen one in my seven and a half years working for the city. The other one was approved on the south end of town. It's a partial right-of-way vacation. Paul Katz, as manager of the Equity Holding Company of Flagler LLC, who own the 2.5 acre parcel shown in red, has requested that the city vacate a portion of the St. Joe Canal right-of-way located south of their property in order to assist them in future redevelopment of the site. This slide shows it a little bit more clear. So St. Joe Canal is 100 foot wide, and they're asking to vacate the northern 50 feet, which by state law, when you do a vacation, it gets split from the center line of the right-of-way. So by state law, this land would go to the adjoining property owner. And it, the vacation area is about 0.4 acres, so their site would go from two and a half to 2.9 acres. So one of the things staff has analyzed is that, you know, when you're vacating right-of-way, how much would be left, and what's currently out there. Florida Park Drive and most of the city streets are 60 foot wide, and that's not the pavement, that's the right-of-way width, which includes utilities and sidewalks and swales and stuff like that. So more importantly, Palm Coast Parkway on the northeast part of the site is 104 feet wide, which allows a widening of the roadway from two lanes westbound to three lanes, so we could have a six-lane road here. So going to the south side, we have St. Joe Canal 100 feet, so if we lost 50 feet, we would still have 50 feet, plus Palm Coast Parkway next to it is 86 feet wide, give or take a foot or two. So we would end up having 136 feet there, which is still 32 more feet than we would have at Palm Coast Parkway Northeast. This, it's a little confusing here, so we added this slide to show you where the site is, and then to the east is the Lutheran Church, and then obviously the community center. So St. Joe Canal goes straight east, while Palm Coast Parkway, this is where it makes the big curve to the southeast. And looking at state statutes, since we don't really have a standard process for this, the state attorney general has appended that cities have the right to vacate a right-of-way if it's in the public interest and is no longer needed. So when a right-of-way is vacated, the adjoining property owners on both sides receive one half of that right-of-way up to the center line. So in this case, if we vacated the whole 100 feet, the south half would just go back to the city, and the north half would go to the adjoining property owner. So it, the request is for 50 feet and leaving the other feet, the 50 feet to the south as is. So this is a picture standing in the middle of the area being vacated. And what I wanted to show you was, we have drainage facilities in here as well as the sidewalk. So the sidewalk behind the, on the west side of the site is out a lot closer to Palm Coast Parkway, so it does not get affected by the right-of-way vacation. It's more like 75 feet away from the south property line. And you can also see FPL utilities in there. So the question is, how do we maintain this, and how does FPL maintain this in the future? So FPL has agreed in writing to vacate the right-of-way as long as they get an easement back on their standard form, and they have agreed to the location of the utility easement to them on the left side of your screen. On the right side of the screen, the city's engineering division... Engineering Division Department has agreed to the area on the right. So you can see on the right, it's the east half, which I just showed you in a previous slide. So that would allow the city to maintain the sidewalk and the stormwater. Now, if this site got developed, it's customary that utility improvements get modified slightly sometimes during this, or the sidewalk gets relocated. For instance, the city engineer may ask them to move the sidewalk one way or the other. That would be on the applicant's cost if any of those changes are made to get it back to the original specification. So, so looking at potential public benefits, which is required for the city council to vacate this, the applicant has offered that the vacation would assist them in redevelopment of the site, which would include tax revenues, and then in staff's opinion, redevelopment of older sites generally improves the aesthetics in the neighborhood and encourages neighboring property owners to upgrade their properties. The site right now is grandfathered in or vested, so it was developed back in 1986. So around the entire site, they put a landscape 10-foot buffer, back when it was Flagler County. The, however, Palm Coast has very stringent landscaping standards, so the, when this site gets redeveloped, they've got to bring the whole site up to today's standards, and that would require a 25-foot widening of a buffer on the north and the south. So in, you don't have to be a math major to figure out if we gave them 50 feet and we require an additional 25 feet along Palm Coast Parkway Northeast and Palm Coast Parkway Southeast, the whole area being vacated gets, goes towards landscaping because the area in, the area that would be redeveloped would actually shift 25 feet to the south. So there's really no net gain to the applicant for, in this vacation, because the, the same amount of area will have to come back as landscaping buffers along both of these roadways, and that will have to be maintained by the applicant at their cost. These are staff's findings. The engineering department has looked at the area proposed for vacation. The city traffic engineer has determined that the area would not be needing, needed for the future widening of some, of Palm Coast Parkway Southeast, even if it goes to three eastbound lanes. Additionally, the city stormwater engineer has reviewed it and determined it's not needed for future stormwater improvements. The proposed easements will allow the existing and future services to be maintained by both the city and FPL, and a public benefit would be obtained through redevelopment of the site, which will provide improved aesthetics along Palm Coast Parkway corridor, increase city tax revenues, and encourage neighboring property owners to improve their properties. On February 23, the applicant's team notified five neighboring property owners along St. Joe Canal of the proposed vacation in public hearing. One neighbor, the Lutheran Church to the east, did come, did call up and ask to meet with me. I met with them. They left and said that the gentleman I met with would not be attending this meeting, so he said if no one showed up, then they would not be objecting to this. Additionally, we put up an orange sign on February 28, two weeks prior to today's meeting, notifying the general public if anyone had a concern and wanted to attend today's meeting. City staff recommends approval of this request subject to one condition: within 90 days of the city clerk recording the resolution, the applicant shall record the executed FPL easement and the city easement agreement and provide the city clerk a copy of those. The applicant's team is here and does have a PowerPoint presentation.
Hello, my name is Eric Giuliano. I'm with Bowman Consulting, 4450 West O'Gally Causeway, Melbourne, Florida. I'd like to thank the staff for their very thorough presentation. I have a really, just a couple, maybe 30, 40 slides. I'm only kidding. I've got like three quick slides that sort of reiterates what he says, and then we'll be here for any questions that you all have. As he said, it's the St. Joe Canal right-of-way vacation. Just an aerial view of the site. Again, it's a 100-foot right-of-way. We'd like to, we'd like to get 50 feet of it so we can maintain the appropriate landscape buffers in the future, help with future redevelopment of the site, reduce the liability and maintenance for the city, and will improve the stormwater quality for the future redevelopment of the site as well as the landscaping. I'm here for any questions or comments.
What are you planning to use those 50 feet for?
Again, it'll be, it just allows us to develop a little bit more of the site because you guys have some very stringent landscape buffer requirements. So like right now, we're showing about, like you said, about 10 feet. So when we redevelop, that'll allow us to go to the, to the 25-foot in front and in back.
Yeah, but redevelop, what do you have in mind? That was my question.
Right now, we've got a few people interested. There's nothing set in stone. We just kind of want to see, see what we can put there, see what's available to us.
Mr. Hoover, I have a question for you. You said there's no precedent for this vacation that you're aware of in the last number of years?
We had another one on Midway Drive that the city council approved probably about five years ago, and it was a, a partial vacation of that.
Okay. And the reason for my question, let me, let me drill it down. It's not really specific to your, your request here, is the city owns land within town center. Does this represent precedent that other developers might use in the future or refer, not use, refer to in the future? It's a hard question because you don't know what the project is, but...
Jason Di Lorenzo, Ray Tyner, and I discussed that with Nasa Borkert.
Okay.
And really, it's, it's, it's really a very, very unique situation. And for instance, we, we discussed the Lutheran Church to the east. If they wanted to vacate it, it really wouldn't do them any good, because their stormwater, the swale out in front of this was very small in the picture. If you go to Lutheran Church, it's big. You could, you can drive vehicles down in their swale, because their stormwater system is out in that right-of-way. So the, in essence, if they came in, maybe we could vacate 15 or 20 feet perhaps, that they could put their landscaping out there, but we would not support vacating anywhere near 50 feet. And so the canal, this is at the high point of the canal, according to Carmelo Morales, the, our stormwater engineer. So it really doesn't need to be needed, but as it flows to the east, there's a drainage canal between the subject property and the Lutheran Church that dumps a lot of stormwater in there. So at, at the west side of the Lutheran Church, this starts becoming a, a canal with a lot of right-of-way. So no one to the east of there would we support vacating that.
Very good. And again, this is not, I'm not inferring any negative to your application or to your request. We do harp on the concept of smart managed growth, so I don't want to, you know, move forward with any kind of a precedent that would alter our ability to smartly manage growth in the future. So are there any other comments from City Council at this time?
I, I just had one question. You said in your presentation, this would increase tax revenue for the city? Can I ask how?
Yes, okay. The, the additional land going to the applicant would be taxed as commercial property. Okay, so it's 0.4 acre, so it's a fair, a fairly amount, fairly high amount, more than, let's say, my house. And then the, the other thing it would do, if it gets developed, I would expect it will be developed for retail because of its location close to the interstate and the, you know, highest and best use for the property. So if it gets developed for retail, though, you have retail sales taxes on that. So that would be the, the higher amount of the two.
Thank, thank you.
Good. Okay. With that, I would open up this resolution for public comment. Are there, yes, ma'am?
My name is Celia Puglisi, and I saw the sign, but with my busy life, trying to make a living, to pay my taxes and everything, I, I kind of read, but I couldn't quite understand this vacation thing. And I live nearby. I have a home nearby. And what I perceive here, though I like very much our neighbor, Mr. Katz, all these years, with that office building, that was there before I ever came to Palm Coast, but anyway, I perceive with this vacation description that maybe they're planning to sell the property to some investor. Of course, it's going to be that way, that it wants to build something on hospitality, like a hotel, or now we are mentioning these retails. Okay, that area of Palm Coast Parkway is very busy with the gas station, the city, the city community center, the charge, the city community center doesn't even have enough space right now for all the people that wants to park there. The traffic on Clubhouse Drive in the corner of my house and Palm Coast, Palm Coast Parkway is horrendous. There are very often accidents there. And the corner of Palm Coast Parkway and Clubhouse Drive, right by the community center, gets flooded all the time with a minor storm. There is a flood. We're talking, we're talking here drainage system that is not even working right now for us as it is. And I invite Mr. Di Lorenzo, former Builders Association Director in Flagler County, that works for the city now, to go and see what we have in that corner. What I say, I am all for Mr. Katz all these years, but if he wants to sell to developers, we cannot be stopped in the back in this way. I'm asking this, I'm gonna, my neighbors don't know. I am, I am a homeowners association. We don't know about this, and how much it's going to affect the traffic if they're planning to put a hotel there, vacation. We never know what they're going to do. When they sold us at the end of Clubhouse Drive, the resort that we lost the hotel and the marina for the use of the residence, it was a big lie. There was the Chamber of Commerce, I still have the shit, I should have brought it today. What it was told to us and what it ended up being, nothing like it was, we were told. I am concerned, any developer that is going to buy this small property, this, this office building, should not be changed from us office building because of the amount of traffic that it's going to generate and is going to affect our quality of life, our safety, and our pursuit of happiness, besides the value of our homes. We are busy in Clubhouse Drive and Palm Coast Parkway. There are accidents, there is flooding on the corner all the time with a minor rain. Please do not approve some things. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And Mr. Hoover, oh, Mr. Hoover, if you would, just in summary fashion, explain the process for any project whatsoever that might be considered for any site.
Okay, so previously, there was a bank at this site, SunTrust Bank. They moved over to a gas station, so there's a good example of redevelopment. So we had a gas station that was getting older, still looked pretty good, but over a period of time. So that was a nice asset for the community. So let's just say Mr. Katz decides to bring another bank in here, that traffic will be added to, to the site. So really, SunTrust traffic moved from this site down to the gas station, and the gas station...
Okay, so without, so the, here's, here's where I'm going. There's a process that the city uses to analyze every step of the site preparation. There's PLDRB, that's our planning board. There's traffic count analysis. In other words, whatever, whatever it is that might go there, we have no idea. Conjecture doesn't really help us here today. I wouldn't want to guess because we don't know. But there's a process in place that will evaluate and analyze the effect on the local community, and there will be public notice and public hearings. Is that correct?
Okay, no, not actually. So if, if we, if there are, a building goes in here and it's over 40,000 square feet, then that would go to the planning board. If they put a hotel in here, which I'm not sure if it would fit, but if the, and then the hotel was over 100,000 square feet, it would come back to city council on a technical site plan review. Whether or not this gets vacated or not by the city council, the site is already zoned general commercial. It's a retail site, at least in my professional opinion, located along that roadway with the traffic signal out front. So it's going to get redeveloped irregardless of whether this vacation gets approved. It, you know, we do a traffic analysis on this. Palm Coast Parkway Northeast and Southeast, in, from what I've seen, is still operating at a adequate level of service and will still be if this site is redeveloped. So we can't say, when Mr. Katz comes in to redevelop this site or to fill it back up, you can't, you can't change your site over to a hotel because the zoning is already allowed for that. It's just technical site plan process, and the Land Development Code basically says if you meet all these standards, then the, the staff has to approve it. If, if we, if it goes to the planning board, there's a slight more openness to this, where the planning board not only looks at that, but they can also look at the aesthetics of the landscaping and the architectural, which is a little bit more subjective than, but basically, you know, we got parking standards, stormwater, and all these standards in there when you come in, and if you meet that, we, we issue a development order.
So through the planning process, all of our requirements would have to be met in order for development to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. That was, that's where I was going with that. I'm sorry, there was a member of the public that wanted to comment?
Mike Martin, Matandas Woods. I saw in the satellite view that there is a sidewalk that goes through the area that's considered being vacated. I just want to make sure that that sidewalk will be protected, that either if there's any development on that area, whether it's landscaped or anything else, we still have public access on that sidewalk.
Mr. Hoover, are you able to answer that question?
That's an easy one. That's what the easement is for. Let me pull this slide up here.
While you're doing that...
Anyway, the sidewalk on the west half of the site is outside the area being vacated. Then it swerves to the north, and it's inside the area where the, we have the, the city drainage and sidewalk easement.
And it was, it would be the applicant's expense to alter or change any sidewalk that needed to be changed? I think you said that earlier in the presentation. Okay, very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I, I keep hearing this thing about the level of service, okay? Level of service is about how much traffic the road could actually handle. But what about the quality of life of the people around there? Yes, the track, the road can handle, handle more traffic, but what about the fumes and the exhaust and the noise? You've got Sanger Law... You've got Sanger Law condos right across the street from this place. What is it gonna do to there if it creates more congestion in that area? Please consider the people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'll do it at the right time. Eugene Walker. Being on a planning board in the town up north, and no offense to Palm Coast, you're only about a quarter of the area that I was on, and be involved in what we call your major plan, or your 10-year exemption or looking ahead. I know a lot about the planning board, and after watching this and seeing your video and your pictures, you have to understand, folks, that everything that they're asking for really is not going to affect you. I had to talk to the mayor, I'm sorry. I have no problem with this. I think it should go through. Why? Everything's at the expense of the landowner. You're making out tax-wise, half of what they're asking for, they're not going to be able to use. They gotta buffer it up. Okay, so I can only see an extension, maybe, of parking spots being put on there for a new business. You're restricted on what you can put there unless council rezones that. That goes through the planning board. They're a lot more powerful, believe it or not, than some of you council people are. They make the rules for what goes in and out. There's not many lawsuits that come out of that. Lawsuits will come out from here with bad decisions, but a planning board is your first step for doing anything. If that's a commercial area, it's planned for that. Look around it. You're not making any, any money off the church, I'm telling you right now, okay? That is a good plan. Being involved in the planning boards for many years and doing what you call major overalls, there is no problem with that plan. That's a no-brainer. Again, I hope you vote for it.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question. All I heard was that possibly we could expand to a six-lane highway, and that freaked me out. I'm like, I personally don't want to have six lanes anywhere in Palm Coast, and it sounds like that could very well happen if this came true.
Right, but we have to, there is no plans, there are no plans for that anywhere in the near future on the traffic thing. But we have to look, if we're gonna vacate this, we have to look down the road 50 years from now, and we, this would leave us enough room. Let's just say we have a trolley car that the city wants to put in, or some kind of mass transit system running along Palm Coast Parkway. So the additional right-of-way, what we said was, there's enough there. If for some reason it does need to get widened in the future to six lanes, then the right-of-way is there to do it. We would not be smart if we vacated right-of-way that we needed for the six-laning of Palm Coast Parkway, even if it may not happen till the year 2100.
Okay, thank you. I just.
Appreciate the question, and at our age, it's hard for us to look forward at the, at the, the effect of autonomous vehicles in the far distant future, and who knows? We might actually want to have a lane exclusively for self-driving vehicles to deliver groceries or way, way beyond my timeline, but I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Right, I just, because we had talked about, a lot of discussion on stop the growth, you know, Palm Coast is beautiful the way it was, it's getting a little too big.
So no plan in place for any of that, it's just?
That's it.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other members of the public like to speak at this time on this resolution? Then I will bring it, I'll close the public comment. I will come back to the dais. Are there any additional comments at this time?
No, I would just like to say that I think this is a viable option, because what we're really enabling this property to do is come up to code when it is being redeveloped and allowing them to put the buffer on the outside instead of them having to infringe upon their already existing boundaries. So I'm understanding, and I thank for the great explanation, and also the future-proofing and looking forward and explaining that.
Vice Mayor, any comment?
No, not a, no comment.
Councilman Danko, very good. Then I would look for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. Any additional discussion by city council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have the vote?
Motion passed.
Thank you.
To zero.
Councilman, uh, councillor. Oh, I'm sorry, city manager, please.
I apologize for interrupting, but this is a rare moment. Mr. Hoover, before you leave.
Okay.
I believe this is your last presentation to city council, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Hoover, you have, you have spoken so many times, I won't, I won't twist your arm to come to the, to the podium, but we do appreciate all of the, yeah, come to the podium, so at least we can get a picture for, for our memory. We appreciate the, I can't imagine how many hours of detailed analysis to protect and to offer us a chance at smart, managed growth for the future. I don't know where your experience goes, but I hope you will allow us to call on you should we need to pry into your memory and things that have happened in the past that will help us look forward to the future. Is there anything you'd like to say to city council or to the public at this time?
I was, I was thinking about my career in government service, and I'm not sure how many years it probably is, maybe like 25 years or something like that. And part of my planning career was working in the private sector for 18 years, so I've been a planner for a third of a century, so I'm getting ready to look forward to some travel with my wife in, going north for the summer. But the, I think I've worked in eight different government agencies, including the military, and the majority of those experiences were not so pleasant because you were always getting stuck in the back by somebody else, and that happens on the private sector, too. But the nicest thing here, and the reason I stayed for seven and a half years, was because the climate here of working together, so it's like, I've never worked at a place where, let's just say, if I need to be off tomorrow afternoon or something, I can ask one of the other planners, there will be two or three volunteers to help me out, no matter what. So it's such a great thing to work at a place where, after seven and a half years, I don't think anybody dislikes me. And a lot of people don't know me because there's so many employees, but the camaraderie ship between the other employees and how they help each other out is just tremendous. And I think part of that goes back to council for supporting staff.
So is it fair to say that not only are, have we been recently rewarded with acknowledgement as the best place to retire in the country, but also now you're confirming that it's the best place to retire from?
Yes. That's right. Yes, thank you. Very good.
Thank you for your service. Very nice. Okay, if you would be so kind as to read the next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022, the Find application Waterfront Park Phase A, Part III. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving a Florida Inland Navigation District Waterways Assistance Program Grant Application for Waterfront Park Phase A, Part III. Authorizing the city manager or designee to execute said grant application, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Mr. Coat, you have a presentation?
Yes, good morning. Carl Cooley, Director of Stormwater and Engineering. You've seen this presentation numerous times, there are little variants in today, but this is just a continuation of an ongoing project we have. We have worked with FINE over the years in regarding various grants throughout the city, whether it's intercoastal cleanup, or Long Creek improvements, or work that's already been completed at Waterfront Park. Waterfront Park's a very popular location. It's a crossroads of recreation. We have trails, it's a, we have fishing piers, so lots of activities occur here. It's very active. Waterfront Park, in terms of where is it, it sits on our waterway system, there are other access points along the intracoastal that are highlighted here, as well as Long Creek that gets out into our saltwater canal system. At Waterfront Park specifically, the city has been awarded several grants over the years. Back when it was originally constructed, we had some design dollars and then some construction dollars. Most recently, last year, we were awarded a grant for Part II, and the previous year for Part I. So I'm outlining here on this particular screen the various improvements that are proposed to, to provide water access at this park site. Phase A, which includes some dredging, some site work, concrete patio pad area, some shoreline stabilization, and then a dock. You can see the overall grant requests are $533,000. That's over a three-year period. With FINE, a smaller community within the FINE district, we are allowed to apply for grants over multi-years for a specific project just due to the revenues and the grant opportunities, dollars being limited. So that is what we've done. This is going, coming forward to you as part three of that cycle. The overall initial project cost is $1,350,000. That includes a contingency as well, as well as the city's match. Most of the items are eligible for a 50% match. There are some items that are not eligible for the FINE grant funding, which would be funded solely by the city, but it's primarily a 50% match for the construction portion of the project. We have a Phase B, which would be a future grant opportunity where we would see some additional parking at the location to serve this water access and the park itself. This kind of just shows the location of where that initial improvement area would be. It's at the exiting point of our waterway into the intracoastal. And then that's our Phase B, which would be our expanded parking area, which is a semi-clear, already cleared area of the site. And this kind of just shows a schematic of that overlaid on the property. And this here is more of a blow-up, just outlining the grant request specifically. Part one and part two have already been processed and awarded grants. Part three, we'd be looking for council to approve a resolution for us to apply for a grant for part three, which would be submitted this month, and we would then bring the grant back in our new budget come October time to actually award the grant if, awarded by FINE. So our timeline now, we had started this project in 2020 where we worked on the design and permits, and then in 2021, we finalized the design and, and did a permit modification and got Part II grant. And now we're in current, current year where we are looking to go out to bid for construction here shortly and apply for Part III of the grant. And we know there's been some discussion of waterway usage on the intracoastal waterway by non-motorized users. This project is going to include some educational kiosks, it's gonna as well have city staff work with the various groups and entities out there to spread the word and educate the users on safe operation and awareness.
So, Mr. Coat, so much of this property is not really accessible by residents right now. In other words, it's, it's, it's green, but we can't really enjoy it as a park because you can't get into it, right?
Correct. There, there's some areas more so where the future parking will be, but correct.
So I guess my point is that this project will allow residents, it'll be more usable, there'll be more area for residents to enjoy a natural setting.
Correct. They'll expand the opportunity.
Beautiful. Yeah, I, I think this is a tremendous project, and also I thank all of our colleagues over at the Florida Inland Navigation District, specifically Randy, for being such an asset to our city, and thank you, Carl, and your team for doing phenomenal work and making this kind of dream a reality. That is a tremendous park, and with water access, it's only going to take it to the next level. I love going over there frequently, and the parking is really going to be a long-term solution, too, because right now in the summertime, there's so many people that walk and utilize that pathway. It just speaks to the level of amenity that we have there, so thank you.
That's, I'll make your words mine, it's just that Waterfront Park is not just a next liberal, if I'm correct, if I'm spelling it correctly, or actually pronouncing it correctly. It's someplace that I would love, I enjoy going there. I love to go there and show my friends when they come in, this is what we get. Improving it, it's very good. Parking, no doubt about it, it's needed, parking, okay? I, I think this is gonna be even better than what it already is. So sometimes invest to save, and then I think this is a good investment. It's gonna cost us a little buck, but still we have our partners that, from FINE, that are helping us up, and I think they're doing a great job. So are you, and so is the rest of the staff. Thank you for the design, I like it, and I hope that we could improve more, and we have money to do that without affecting other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman, any question?
Thank you, Carl. No questions.
Very good. So at this point in time, I would ask the public, would anyone care to comment on this resolution at this time?
Mark Lewis, Palm Coast. I've been boating past this location many, many times. There's a lot of boat wakes. I assume this is a floating dock, and I'm concerned that the floating dock will be destroyed rapidly by large boat wakes being thrown by all the intercoastal traffic, and it's gonna be an expensive thing to maintain in the long run. I don't know, maybe you could address that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any comment, Mr. Coat?
Yeah, we, we actually had a dock manufacturer out to site to look at this, and he provided some insight on the location of the dock and orientation of the dock to minimize that disruption, as well as our dredging operation and extensive the dredging that we're gonna be placing in here. So we, that was part of the design process that was looked into.
So you'll note the consideration from the speaker. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
It's a great project. I think it's going to be the first launching ramp for people that lost the launching ramp when we had the hotel, the Sheraton Hotel here off Clubhouse Drive. I believe within the city, it's gonna be the first boat launching ramp, correct?
We, we have one at Long Creek, you know, non-motorized.
It's not for motorboats.
Correct.
In Long Creek, you only have it for?
This, this will not be for motorboats as well.
Will not be for motorboats?
No.
Oh, I see, no, I thought, I thought it was, I misunderstood. But anyway, I guess, anyway, it's a good project for people in Canoes and.
And if I may, I apologize, I forgot to ask you to please state your name for our record.
Celia Puglisi.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, it's a nice project, even though it's not for motorboats.
And I would note that we have.
Needs launching ramps on Palm Coast.
Good. Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional speakers at this time?
I'll be quick, I'm pressing up, so, question on the area, I love the idea, I'm glad we have more parks. That was part of the Graham Swamp Plantation. Has an archaeological survey been done there?
I, I'm not sure I follow the question. Could you clarify, please?
Please, sir, ask me the question, I'll try to help.
Waterfront Park is a great idea, great thing, but that was part of the Graham, Graham Plantation, where Graham Swamp's named after. Has an archaeological survey been done of the area that's gonna be developed?
If that's a question, you have to get back to him on.
Yeah, we, we can follow up on that, but I know it's part of our overall permitting process through the state, those are items that are looked at. I know specifically when we did the Grand Swamp Trail, we did an archaeological assessment, and it would have included this particular area, because we extended the trail at the time to the site, but I, I will check into it and confirm that that was overall looked into as part of the process.
Good, and the city manager has a note on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Second part of that, when they did Long Creek, there was supposed to be a plaque put up, the Long Creek Reserve, for the Long Creek Landing, and that was part of the grant, from what I understand, but the plaque never made it.
Yes, we, Long Creek is being built in phases, and it's in our long-range 10-year CIP plan. There are some stipulations for us to develop part of the site as part of our grant that was awarded for the land purchase. So it is part of future work. We do have some current designs out there now to extend the boardwalk to the landing and to install some educational kiosk. But some of those features that you're discussing on those educational items, which may be a plaque, or maybe some more in-depth items, in terms of how to relate the history of that particular site, because it's a very historic site, will be in an upcoming phase to satisfy our conditions of the initial grant.
Cool. Very good. Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to speak on the item at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come back to the dais. Any additional...
Prove it. I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I would just like to note that, to Celia, that Flagler County has the Grady Panther Boat Launch, which is just a little bit down the road, which offers water access for motorboats.
Okay. All right, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Clerk have the vote.
Clerk, have the vote, thank you. Next item will be our consent agenda, and I would ask the city council, any items on the consent agenda you'd like removed? None? I would offer the consent agenda out to, for public comment now.
Yes, I am with a consent agenda and an item, item eight, for the east-west feasibility extension. It's so many millions right now, just the extension for the Matanzas Parkway west of Route One, just the engineering studies as reported by, I guess, Mr. Code Department, Car Code Department, is one, almost 1.8 million. I wonder how much the other extensions, whether Palm Coast Parkway, Whiteview, and whatever. This is, the money's that they are spending now from the current residents into lands that are vacant, that are owned by developers or whoever, that are not even yet paying for the meager impact fees that they are supposed to pay now, that, as it is, is not sufficient. Why, why are we spending money on an engineering study, there are millionaire engineering studies, to go west of Route One, when we have problems in, in the sidewalk of Simarone, into the unfinished traffic calming issues in Floria Park Drive? That we need the, the north widening of Olkings Road from Palm Coast Parkway north, and it's not done, and many other issues from other people around Belted and those areas that I am not very aware, but I heard here and there. Why are we expanding, spending this money? Where is this money coming from? It's, it's from the, from the impact fees, there are no impact fees paid on, on vacant lands. We, the residents, don't understand this, what the city is proposing. Why are we so much in gear in, in expanding and benefiting lands that are undeveloped yet, when we are not taking care of our problems that we have seriously here, you know? We're people, we have people dying for speed, where there is need of humps or, or, or road humps, like in the woodlands. This kid was killed, this teenager, by speed, and Mr. Taylor next door was asking for the city to install some humps or bumps for years. And we are not taking care of here, what we have, we're expanding with the current money away. We are biting too big, and we're going to choke in that mouthful bite, Mr. Mayor and Council. We need to address the problems of what we have now that are not resolved before we spend millions in expansion. I'm asking you very please, let's have common sense. We need a quality of life preserved by all of you, our happiness and our safety, and that is not being done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. City manager have any comment at this, at this time?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Let Mr. Coe just make a comment, that's fine. Stay there, it's fancy, it's okay, it's okay.
I, I can follow up to that previous comment. One of the primary reasons we're looking at the east-west connectors is there's a lot of development occurring. We know at the end of Palm Coast Parkway, there was a hospital site, there's a sawmill amenity center at the end of Matanzas. At White Mill, there's a property that was just annexed, and as, what we really are trying to do is save future dollars by looking at the feasibility of if those major east-west connectors are extended west, what are the implications in terms of property right away the city would have to obtain? What land impacts? How would the alignment of that roadway occur? Because if we wait till properties develop, and then trying to go through eminent domain to avoid those properties, there could be opportunities that we miss out on, because either we can't now extend those roadways west, because they've been developed. So right now, our due diligence on that item she, she pulled was the feasibility studies, and that's really what it is, is to analyze all those east-west connectors, to look at how those roadways would be extended, what those alignments are, what the implications are, what lands may be needed, what kind of impacts to wetlands that would arise, work with the railroad company to find out when and where, and how many crossings we could have of the railroad, those sorts of things. So, yes, we are using impact fee dollars to do that, because it would be adding capacity to our roadway system, but we're looking actually to, to plan for future expansion, but also save future dollars as well.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry, next speaker.
Mr. Sims Jones, I live in Palm Coast, and, you know, I see what they want to do with the west side of US One at Matanzas. But we have the east side of Matanzas, which is two lanes. We have a hospital going up there, and Matanzas has become a real east-west corridor. A lot of people are using Matanzas more than Palm Coast Parkway because of the congestion on Palm Coast Parkway. Now that we have the exit or 95, the widening of Old Kings Road, we have a lot more traffic now going down Matanzas. And Matanzas needs to be widened to four lanes because of the additional traffic, and we have the hospital that's going to be right there at Matanzas, which is definitely going to increase the amount of traffic that's going to be going up and down Matanzas. So I understand about extending it to the west, but the east side of Matanzas needs a lot of attention now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
This poor guy in the gray sweater, everyone's jumping up faster than him today. Greg Bloise, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. I wanted to do two things. One was really just to follow up on the staff's comments, that, you know, really, this is the city looking forward and trying to plan appropriately, so I wanted to come up here and say that the chamber supports that. It is obviously being paid with impact fee money. What Mr. Sims said, yeah, you know, I live on the north side of town, Matanzas is getting busier. It's, it's not too bad yet, but that's part of why we need to have these types of studies. What I really wanted to say, and actually, I wanted to say at the last meeting, but it didn't seem appropriate with them in the room, was this company, England, Tims and Miller, I have significant experience with, when I worked out of Tallahassee at the State Chamber, and they're an exceptional company. So I just wanted to let you all know, in terms of vendors and who you're working with, those folks really, really are one of the best in the state, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Eugene Walker. And for those who are a little confused on my last statement, the backup plan is what I was referring to is actually call your master plan. I'm looking what's going on here. I was going to speak on the next, well, it's the second one coming up, which was the extension way. Yeah, that's going to have to be done. And the way, looking at it here with your master plan, you have to look in the future, because everything this gentleman over here stated is true. If you, if you let development get in there and then try to go with a roadway, that's a lot of money, folks, when you got to end up in court battling back and forth and going for, taking domain. You got to be smart. You got to get these major roadways in. And for the gentleman's concern with the two lanes of that roadway, that's plenty wide enough to widen it, okay? And I'm sure you're going to, you're going to have to. 95 is right there, okay? When I get on and off there, because I live in that B section, and I'm watching up the new apartments and condos going up, and the other big corner, which is going to a church, which we make no money on for taxes, folks. I love religion, I'm a Catholic, but we make no money off that property. We're going to expand it, and this is smart. I, I like this way of thinking. You may not like development, but it's going to be there, but we have to control it, and that's by our master plan. And if you have a chance to go to a planning board when this comes up with master plans, up north, it's every 10 years you got to renew. I don't know about down here. But attend those meetings, find out what they're doing. We have to limit, our big problem is people coming in without the businesses there to support it. We got to stop with the apartments and condos. I know you heard it from me before, you're going to hear from a lot of people. That brings in people, but the expense goes up with the people coming in. Schools and services cost money, folks. We got to start thinking smart. If we extend that, and if it's put out for the right restrictions for businesses, clean businesses, that will help us, then that's a smart move. There's, it's a no-brainer again. Common sense, folks, that's all we need.
Good. Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional members of the public that would like to comment at this time on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come back to the dais. Any additional comment at this time?
I just have, I just have one comment, and I completely agree with the gentleman that just spoke. And this extension, you know, if we ever want to balance east and west when it comes to a development or anything, we have to start opening those ways into the west. Make it, make it, you know, good for the people that are going to develop on the other side. We, right now, we are so unbalanced on the east side of US One, that we have to start building on the other side, on west of US One. Or we're following the risk of being, you know, parking lots on our roads. So in order to do that, we have to have those extensions into go, actually, there's money already from that committee, that we have money to actually, to create, I forget the agency that's actually helping us out, but I think it's state, that we're going to open, actually, shouldn't be just one, should be a few more out there that we invest to save, and that's what I believe in. I think this, this actually, thank you for bringing that up, sir, and I agree completely with you.
Thank you for your comment, Vice Mayor. Any additional comment?
None.
Then I would ask for a motion at this time?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second it.
As it is.
I have a second. Any additional discussion at this time? So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk have the vote? Thank you.
Passes four to zero.
All right, we now move to public participation. This would be on items not previously discussed on today's agenda. First speaker, please.
Mike Martin, Palm Coast, other than Tims Woods. I've really a question for the city attorney. I just want to make sure I understand the ordinance that is going to be written concerning the raises. You made a comment that it would not affect those already serving. Is that correct? Again, because I don't, I want to make sure, if I tell people what's going on, I want to make sure that I'm correct with this. So I want to understand whether...
Counselor, is it fair that the, the exact verbiage is located in the city charter?
It is. It's in section six, subsection A, as in apple, and it states compensation. So if you do want to look it up, it's on municode, municode.com, you can get the city's...
And there is, there is no change in the city charter. It is exactly as written.
Okay.
But to your question, the compensation shall not take effect until the date of commencement of the terms of council members elected at the next regularly scheduled election that follows the adoption of the ordinance by at least six months. So it would affect, you know, if they, an ordinance is drafted and considered, and if it's adopted, then at least six months from then, when there's the next election, then for those terms...
Can we just clarify for one moment?
What effect?
Is that six months from, so, just for instance, just for clarification, if this gets adopted, it's six months from the next election? So if this next election is just, let's say for whatever reason, November 1st, and we pass it five and a half months before, and it wouldn't come into effect until the following election? Did I hear that correct?
With, with the way that you're phrasing your question, I, I believe so, because it does say at least six months.
Got it. Yep, so, clear, yep.
Very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make public comment on any items not previously discussed on the agenda at today's meeting?
I'm a little confused right now on this consent. I realize this is previous, but did the consent take care of eight through 14?
Yeah, the consent agenda consists of items number eight through 14, that is correct.
I don't believe that was made, announced to the public back here.
Well, it appears on the consent agenda, yes. Publicly noticed and available in the agenda. Did you have a comment that you'd like to make on the consent agenda?
You better believe I do.
Well, hold on a second, please, then. Counselor, I'll need some guidance here. Am I permitted to accept a comment at this time?
It's already been voted on.
I mean, you can accept a comment during public participation on it, but it's a closed, if you want to, with him, you know...
I've closed public comment, but sir, if you want to make your comment in, in the remaining time, go ahead.
All right, I do have a few questions. First of all, where is the smart and managed growth? When are we going to take care of the east side first? When are we going to start looking at the historical places and sites that are being destroyed as we speak, especially up in the northwestern section right now, as we speak? A historical road has been destroyed by a developer. You people okayed it? When is it going to stop? Where is the east-west extension going to go to? Where does it end? Can I have an answer to that question? Apparently not. Is it going to go over to the, to the brick road? What happens to the brick road? That's a historical piece of property. What's going to happen to it? It's going to be destroyed. Why? Because you're going to extend roads over to that area. What happens when you extend roads? Development. Does anybody care about history anymore? Apparently not. We already know that from what remains below Palm Harbor Shopping Center. Do you know what's there? Probably not. One of the largest sugar mills in the east coast of Florida, except for Bureau. And now it's, it's underneath the shopping center. I hope you all are, are proud of what you're doing to destroy history. That's all I have to say.
We now, we now move to item, oh, we have another member of the public. I've actually closed public participation for consent agenda items.
Public participation? Is it just for the public participation?
I'm sorry, public, go ahead.
Greg Bloise, President and CEO of the Palm Coast... Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. Wanted to come and update you all on three things that I thought were worth spending time on. Number one is yesterday, the unemployment rate came out for Flagler County for January of 2022. It sits at 3.9%. That's up almost a full point, which isn't totally unexpected because of seasonal job loss when we look at our local retailers hiring. But I wanted to make you aware that February's data will be released next week, and that'll help us better understand the economic, the impact of the economic headwinds that all businesses are dealing with, whether it's gas prices, increasing interest rates, so on and so forth, supply chain. So that was number one. We'll have a better look at what's happening with our local jobs coming up on Friday of next week. But for right now, the first report was 3.9%, up almost a full percentage point. In the grand scheme of things, it was 5% last time this year, so we're still trending in the right direction. Also, on Saturday, March 26th, we have a small business expo and conference happening right here at Central Park behind City Hall. It's grown to over 100 local small businesses. And I just wanted to take a moment to invite the public to shop. Local businesses for free around our lakeside park. We'll have food trucks, activities, music, and more. Partnering with the cities, be local, buy local. And I just wanted to share with you that staff has really been exceptional in helping make this event come to fruition. So sincerely appreciate their help. If anybody listening wants to learn more, you can go to FlaglerCountyBizExpo dot com. Business Boot Camp, we have a free education for business leaders at Daytona State College. That's Monday, March 28th. The subject of that course will be leveraging the internet for business growth. We're able to provide these local businesses for, these local services for free to businesses thanks to a partnership with both Daytona State College and Career Source. If you're interested in learning more, you can go to PalmCoastFlaglerRegionalChamber dot com to sign up. And we're still allowing people to attend virtually if they don't feel safe enough to be in a room with a bunch of other business folks, which is understandable. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will see you the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm back from maternity leave. Happy to be here. Anna Maria Long, Executive Officer of Flagler Home Builders Association. Couple things from, I listened to the public comment this morning from the comfort of my home. So Palm Coast is middle-aged at best. It's been inhabited by homeowners for just 50 years. It is expected and inherent in nature for a new city to grow and to change as it grows. ITT developed the land to be the largest planned unit development in Florida to include homes, marinas, golf courses, and oceanfront motels. Why is the east side built up? Simple. That's where the overlook was. That's where the ITT models were that you'd access by boat. Closing the gates for residents closes the gates for businesses. Is Palm Coast open for business? Every vote that you make will answer that question. Is Palm Coast open for business? The city and chamber work tirelessly to develop our small businesses and bring in new business, but they're met with unwelcome comments. Every 100 homes built in Palm Coast brings in $20.3 million in local income, provides $14.3 million in local wages and salaries, raises $3.7 million in local taxes and fees, and supports 339 jobs. This information was done in a commissioned study by the National Association of Home Builders that looked at the county and the city specifically. I conclude that people are moving here, whether we like it or not. We all did. If you came here believing that it wouldn't change, even though you increased the population by coming here, I urge you to reevaluate. Citizens complain about the growth. Imagine if people came here because they would regardless, right? And the city never changed a thing. Now that would be a mess. Who's physically building these homes and businesses? Your neighbors. Many builders have been here for decades. Even the nationwide builders, they employ people who've been here for decades. They're your literal neighbors. They live down the street from you. They live next door to you. Some of them longer than you've lived here yourself. And who do they employ? Your other neighbors, the subcontractors who do the work. The builders might be upset for saying this, but the general contractor themselves does not physically do the work. They employ a bunch of subcontractors who come in several trades for each home, and they come in and they do the manual labor. The general contractor oversees and is responsible for all of that. So those subcontractors are the ones putting in the work, and they're your neighbors. So please remember to answer the question with your vote. Is Palm Coast open for business? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining members of the public that would like to, excuse me, sir? Please. Respect the other speakers as they respected you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make final comments at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time. We now move on to item number J, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. And if I may, let me begin. I have a motion to make. The motion is to add city council review of the city manager's contract at the meeting scheduled for March the 22nd. That would be to review the contract.
I'll second it.
Do you have a, have a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I think that-
You made the motion. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Second. Does this go out to have a comment?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that we're clear. You couldn't make that motion unless you passed me the gavel. So when you made the motion, let's make sure that you redraw that motion you made and let somebody else make it.
Counsel Madenko made the motion, and then I'll second it.
Why?
We draw the motion you made because you cannot make that motion while sitting over there, sir, with all due respect. So if you-
Okay, stop for a second, please. So explain, I'm making a motion to put an agenda item.
If you make the motion, yes, you should pass the gavel.
Pass the gavel. Okay, then I will do that. Thank you for that. Then I will formally pass the gavel.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
You gotta give it back, Eddie.
Gotta make a motion for that, though.
Okay, now do we have that motion to put that on the agenda? The 3/22, March 22nd?
And I'll second it.
Second it. Any discussion from our colleagues? I'll bring it up to the public. Anybody has any comments regarding this motion? None, seeing it, seeing none. Bring it back to this council. Anybody wants to add any comments? Okay, then let's ask for a vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, none of them. Okay? Motion passed for to zero. Thank you very much. You got it back, and make sure what you do with it is always correct.
All right, now that we've cleaned that up, and I thank you so much for your assistance, I will now open up for discussion by city council. Vice Mayor, why wouldn't I start with you? Please go ahead. Excuse me for a minute. Go ahead.
I am glad you're starting with me. But, okay, I would like to have you present when I'm talking. Last week, I look forward to come up with a moratorium regarding multifamily homes. Apparently, it wasn't well received by one specific organization, and I'll be clear about it, was the Chamber of Commerce of Flagler County. I'd like to thank the Flagler County. See, I'm stalling it, so the mayor could be here. I don't know, because I usually don't stall at anything.
Do you wanna pause for a moment, and we wait for him to get back?
No, I'm pretty sure that the mayor could hear or whatever. He's got his hands on, so anyway, so. I was basically accused of being anti-everything, maybe antichrist. A red alarm was given to the business of this 4,397.7 members' organization. Forgive the sarcasm. I've had calls like my colleagues had, guaranteed, because most of those emails, they were CC'd. So you saw them. I saw them. And the amount of calls that I'm pretty sure you got, it's unreal. Some in favor, and one was against it. And one that was against it was from an investor. I just wanna remind that investor that I'm an investor. I invested all my life savings in Palm Coast. All my life savings in Palm Coast. When 75% of the people of Palm Coast owns their homes, and they talk to me and telling me, no, I don't want more density in here, I have to listen to them. And what I'm doing here is nothing but bringing it up to the attention of my colleagues. Nobody has to do the moratorium. I just wanna discuss it. Is it good? Is it not good? And the only way we could stop certain growth is if we legislators legislate on. Actually, by having comments like I had here last week, poisonous, anti-business from the side of the Chamber of Commerce, the problem here is not basically with me. You're not putting me in jeopardy. The only person actually in here that you're hurting is the mayor. And I'll explain why. Because listen to your commentings, and listen to the side you talk over here on that last lease agreement that we had. You taking one side. The mayor is part of your board of directors. So that may be, that may be conflict of interest. So you're not doing anything to me. Excuse me, sir. I didn't interrupt you. You will not interrupt me. That much I can guarantee you. Okay? And that's basically what you're doing here. Me, you're not affecting much, because the job that the newspaper did was the best thing that could happen to my point. When they come up with an article slash news last week regarding putting me as the antichrist, it worked in my favor because I had so many calls of people telling me they agree with me, and they didn't know until they read it on that newspaper. So therefore, that was, thank you. I have to thank you for that. Regarding affordable housing, ma'am, with all due respect, affordable housing, maybe we don't have affordable housing now. But I guarantee you, if we go that way, if we keep on building multifamily homes, you're gonna have affordable housing a decade or so when people no longer wants to move to Palm Coast because of the density that we created. A lot of people are looking for that. Right now, we are still the best place in America. Just listen to this. Best place in America to retire. Are we open for business, like the Home Builders Association representative said? I guarantee you we are. I don't see anyone in here. I guarantee you, there's no one in here that's against business or any other type of business. All we, all I'm trying to do is bring up to the attention the controlled growth. The controlled growth. That's all I'm saying. And I've had, in the phone calls that, you know, that I had, once again, with all due respect, you know, people showed what they're about. Ma'am, I promise I'll talk to you at the end, because now it's not the time to talk. There are possibilities. If my colleagues don't think that I am proper by bringing up this possible moratorium, then let's do the next best thing. Let's ask the people of Palm Coast. Survey it. One question, two question survey. If you don't think that, then let's ask the people of Palm Coast. I think it's the fair way to do it. Let's ask the people of Palm Coast what do they want. And let me tell, once again, I'm an investor. I invested my life savings here. That's all I own is my home and a few, and my pension. Guarantee you that 70% of the people, or 75% of the people that owns homes, that's what they did. And this is what I'm looking for. I'm not here to hurt anybody. I don't wanna hurt anybody. I don't wanna hurt any business by far. If anything I want is clean, healthy business to come to Palm Coast. But when we have an organization of maybe about 4,677.5 members here telling me that, I fight it back. I don't wanna fight the organization per se. I fight some of the things they said, to the point of red alert, like I'm the antichrist. I'm not anti-business. Everybody knows that the only thing I've been voting is against multifamilies. You have projects of 200, 300, 400 homes, as long as they're single-family homes, which they could be bought, not rentals. Because this multifamilies are not for people to buy. They're for rentals. Okay, and if you confuse affordable housing with workforce housing, then we got a bigger problem, especially for those professionals. Affordable housing will be in Palm Coast, I could almost guarantee you, a decade from now if we keep on going that way. I repeat it, when people no longer wants to move to Palm Coast, then we have it. We have the best place in the US to retire. And you think that's bad? That's a beauty. As to some of other companies, my wife is a realtor. But you wanna know something? Let's put it this way. If you think that this multifamily homes are bringing anything to the real estate field, think again. Or enlighten my dumb intelligence, if I may. Okay, I just, let me see if I don't forget anything. So this moratorium, it's, you know, I, yesterday, actually, in yesterday, I was in a meeting with the, Denise. Sorry. And also, our chief, when I got a phone call that I couldn't speak about later on, says, there's people out there wanting to start a petition with thousands of signatures and come here and fill this room. I beg of those people not to do it. Please, 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 please. Do not start any petitions. Do not. We are intelligent enough to discuss these things. If my colleagues don't really agree with moratorium as it is, then let's survey it. That's what I would do. I would like to have the people of Palm Coast answering it. Thank you very much.
Does that complete your comments, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, at this moment, yes.
Let me just respond. First, let me correct your statement. And with all due respect, regarding the Flagler, the Palm Coast Flagler Chamber of Commerce, as directed by council, I resigned my board membership prior to being sworn in.
I apologize. I didn't know that.
Okay.
I apologize. Didn't know that.
So let's just clarify that for the record. Number two. And again, with all due respect, you had made an excellent suggestion some many months ago, shortly after I was sworn in, that it might be a good time for the City of Palm Coast City Council to review the comprehensive plan in an effort to decide if that comprehensive plan was still current or perhaps needed our input and our adjustment for the future. I think an excellent idea, and I think we all had some consensus on beginning that process. And as you know, the strategic action planning process is beginning now. And it's fully my expectation that that idea, that suggestion by you would be a part of the plan going forward. So you have already made that suggestion for us for the future, and I thank you for that. When we excite the media, excite the press, and we throw out words like moratorium, we need to be very cautious about how others might perceive that word. I myself have had phone calls from local stakeholders, also from stakeholders from around the country and from around the world that get very concerned about what our business-friendly and/or growth potentials might be. In my world, it's almost incalculable what loss we may have already suffered because of our use of words. So I would suggest to myself and to each of us on the city council that we carefully weight our words so that the wrong impressions are not presented or promoted or projected out to the public. Again, I do agree with your suggestion, and as a matter- Again, I do agree with your suggestion, and as a matter of fact, I will also reinforce the concept. It is now time to review the comprehensive plan, which was put in place more than 21 and a half years ago, so perhaps a quarter of a century ago. It is time to relook at that and see what the future begins, so that we can maintain and retain the lifestyle that we all enjoy, which is why we came here, which is why we have, by at least one source, one single magazine, been awarded the honor of being the best place in the United States to retire, but also looking towards the sustainability of that, and the growth that would be required, smartly managed, to make sure that 10 years and 20 years hence, we will win that same award again. So that would be my final comment under this item today. So I'll finish that. Councilman, comment?
I think very well spoken, Mr. Mayor, and I fully agree with what you just said. I think the use of the word "moratorium" is something we need to think about before we say it, because it does send a bad message to the business community, especially those who are planning on coming here and investing in our city. But I do agree with everything you just said. I have nothing really, except I'd like to maybe get a consensus that perhaps it's time we take this plastic down. We're the only ones hiding behind it. Everyone else is sitting close together every place you go. Thank God, it appears that we're past this mess, at least we hope we are. And so I would just suggest that perhaps it's time we remove this plastic. That's it.
If I may just respond to that, and I would, City Manager, it's, you probably have to do a quick look around the building. Are there other protections that you would consider? Could you bring back in the next meeting, anything else that might be considered as well?
Sure.
Because I don't think this is the only partition, so we handle it all properly and together, and maybe you bring it up, and then we'll make sure that everybody is okay with that?
Understood, thank you.
Good. Councilman Clufus, final comments?
Absolutely. I agree with everything that was spoken earlier today, both by Mayor Alvin, Councilman Dankula, who reflected on his comments. I think we have an incredible responsibility up here. The words that we choose to use have repercussions beyond this council and beyond this legislative body. And I also think it's an incredible responsibility for us that what we say up here gets amplified. And that is an unfortunate realization, that when we talk about controversial things like this, more often than not, something gets pulled away and gets blown out of proportion. And it's just, you know, we have to be responsible up here. And off of that topic, I would like to highlight, yesterday in Indian Wells, one of our local tennis players, Riley Opelka, actually defeated the 13th world-ranked Denis Shapovalov. And I'd like to say congratulations to him for doing that, but then, more importantly, tomorrow, he's actually playing Rafael Nadal, which the time isn't to be determined, but we're having our own local tennis player play arguably the best tennis player of all time. So I encourage everyone to watch that and root for our local guy. And then my final question would be regarding Food Truck Tuesday today, whether or not weather's potentially detrimental, and whether or not we're still going to be having Food Truck Tuesday? I know that's kind of an on-the-spot question, but I just looked at the radar as planning on Food Truck Tuesday, but is it a Taco Tuesday at home kind of afternoon, or?
Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon. We typically make the decision after lunch, so that it gives the food trucks time enough to prepare. We're cautiously optimistic, but we will make the call after probably around 1:30.
Understood. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And that's all I have for comments.
Could you give your comments?
Yes. I just wanted to apologize for not knowing, because I did a study, especially on our local Chamber of Commerce, and I saw your picture there. I didn't know that you were...
I was younger-looking then.
But you want to know, I apologize for that, and I don't think then that's any type of jeopardy or any conflict of interest for that.
Thank you.
That much I have to say. Other than that, just the comprehensive plan, so I could tell our constituents, when do you think we're going to be able to tell them that we're looking into this growth?
So I would suggest that you make that your priority in your own individual strategic action plan interview that you, I assume, is scheduled with city staff, and at that time...
I already had it, but I'll go back to them.
And at that time, you introduce a date on how early that could begin.
Okay, so, thank you very much, and I'll make sure that I'll have another meeting with the staff in the strategic action plan, and then I'll add that to the thing, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. With that, we'll move to discussion by city attorney, matters not on the agenda. I believe you have an item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention...
Move your microphone a little closer, I know it's complicated.
All that legal paperwork?
I'm gonna look at it on my phone. Okay. I just wanted to mention about the special... Wanted to give an update on the District 2 vacancy for City Council. Just that all applicants will be invited to attend the 9:00 a.m. special meeting on March 22nd, 2022. Applications are due to the city clerk by noon, March 16th, which is tomorrow. All applications will be placed in the special meeting agenda for the March 22nd special meeting. And at the council's pleasure, you will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicants. At the conclusion of the question and answer session, council may discuss the applicants to determine the best applicant to fulfill the remainder of the vacant seat term, which is until November 2022. Council will roll-call their vote for that and choose the applicant. Once City Council has made the appointment, the city clerk will provide the oath of office to the newly-appointed member, who will then take his or her seat at the dais for the remainder of the term. And also, just to make mention, so any applicants know, there's a special budget workshop that will immediately follow the special meeting on March 22nd. That's all I had.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When is the last day for the applicants to apply?
Tomorrow at noon, I should have them in hand.
I don't know if I could ask this, how many applicants do we have so far?
I think I have five in.
Five, okay.
I have a quick question, I just want to clarify something. That seat might not go all the way to November. If that election during the primary, which is in August, if a candidate gets 50% plus one, they'll be seated in August, correct?
No.
So I need clarification on that.
Right, they will be sworn in in accordance with the charter at the third business, the second business meeting, the third week in November.
So I want to make sure the applicants know that there is a possibility they will only be there through August.
Thank you for...
No, I think she...
I mean, if there is a...
Wait, 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 wait.
No.
I think she said...
If the primary winner, if the candidate wins at the primary, at the election, they don't get sworn in until the second meeting in November. It's what they call the organizational meeting.
Oh, okay, that's what I was confused about. So, okay, thank you very much on that.
That's a good question, I would have thought the same, that's a good question.
Good, good, good. Thank you for the question. Okay. Now we move to discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. The first is procedural in your agenda. You'll note that there's an emergency sole source, so it's just our administrative process bringing that to your attention and open for any questions. And the second item is actually in the theme of succession planning. We heard a little bit of that this morning from the fire chief, and then enjoyed congratulating Bill Hoover on moving on to retirement. And I would like to ask Chief Forte if he could come up and give a little update on succession planning as well.
I liked you better in the casual polo shirt before in the picture.
Me too. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Bevan. Every person at every level and every organization has the responsibility for succession planning and mentoring. Meaning, everyone, from the newest employee, to the seasoned veteran, to the managers, to the city manager and city council, must think about succession planning and how it plays a role in the future of any organization. When someone steps out of their current role and have to consider how they have to replace themselves, and to be sure the organization always moves forward. The mindset is such, the employees must be unafraid in order to reach those below on how to grow higher. Providing the opportunity for other leaders to take a role in the organization will allow great things to happen. There are two important parts of the succession planning. Everyone in the organization has to believe in succession planning in order for it to work. If we treat employees like followers, they will always be followers and never be leaders. And allowing people to lead, even if they don't believe in themselves at the time, will build the needed character with the expectations that learning will eventually take place. We are attempting to move employees out of a position of comfort and into the next season in their career that will challenge them professionally. The second point is administration and city council has to eliminate the future gaps in services by embracing the city's succession plan and prepare for what will ultimately come as 65 potential retirements in the next five years. This means 15% of our workforce will be changed out, and that experience will no longer be here. If we don't believe it at the top, they won't believe it everywhere else in the system, and it is that simple. In the fire department, we have stopped training for compliance and have empowered decision-makers at all levels. We've transformed our fire department from telling people what to do, to having them tell us what has to get done. We've pushed authority to the lowest positions to the newest employee, and they have pushed better planning and ownership up the chain. As a leader, we have the responsibility to train people and give them the skill set, build up their confidence, so they can have the job that they love. When this is done and done correctly, we raise all ships in our harbor. Mentorship, another successful program in the fire department, is focused on career path growth, improving skills and reaching employees' goals. Mentors tell you what you don't want to hear that will make you a better firefighter, leader, or person. We mentor across department horizontally, up and down the chain vertically, and citywide. We mentor internally and outside our field, and as we do so, we learn and teach each other. Great leaders don't need rank to show that they are great leaders, they are just great leaders. I have witnessed the newest employees teaching the most seasoned fire officers without hesitation, because they all want to be better. The succession plan and mentoring program instituted more than 10 years ago have laid the groundwork for the next generation of officers to come, and is a proven method to hire long-term employees that place character first. As public safety is concerned, we are moving forward to fulfill our mission of delivering the best service to the community every time. Our organization is strong, our leadership throughout is focused, and I'm confident in the people that protect us day and night. That all being said, I have given a lot of consideration to the role of my history in this amazing fire department. It has been the greatest honor to serve this community for the last 32 years. And if given the chance to do it all over again, I would have to be with every one of these amazing firefighters and remarkable team members in the city. In effective October 14th, 2022, I will be retiring as the fire chief of the City of Palm Coast Fire Department. This career did not happen alone, and there are so many people that I would like to thank for sharing this journey with me. And over the next seven months, I will certainly try to acknowledge them all. But for now, we will move forward with transitioning, so that there is a seamless exchange of leadership in October. Denise, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay, 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 stay there, Chief. You deserve to stay there, you deserve. Your Honor, if you'll allow me. Chief Forte, you know, emotions goes through my heart, that I usually think a lot more within with my head. And, you know, sometimes, and I'm not one of those guys that usually are at a loss of words, but you led well, I know for a fact. You leading well. And the person that's going to replace you, I can almost guarantee anybody out there, that if he comes even close to you, which I think he will, will be leading well. You know my passion for the people in uniform, because of what you do, of what you did, and of what you're going to do out there. Words can't describe what goes in my heart right now. We became friends, and the day that my son died, you were one of the first people to be there and help me. I'll never forget that. Sorry if I'm getting emotional, but just, when you retire, go out there, buy a fishing rod without a string, don't even let the fish bother you, my friend. Enjoy life, enjoy life.
Thank you.
Chief, I would just like to say that an incredible example of leadership, since I've been part of this council, and the transcendence of knowledge, and how you live as a person, and the most positive outlook, because you're the most prepared, and your department and your entire team act as a family, have gotten us through some of the most trying times in the history of Palm Coast. Not even the, I'm not talking about the fires of, you know, past that have almost devastated Flagler County, but even as recent as the hurricanes, I've seen tremendous examples of leadership. And just that you lead by example, and that's how real leaders lead. I don't think you would ever call yourself a leader, because everyone calls you the leader. So I'm thankful that I've had the experience of being able to watch as you teach those around you, and you have an incredible ability to make everyone around you better and want to be better. And I also thank you for the incredible leadership and dedication to our community that you've offered throughout your time here.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Councilman?
As a former volunteer fireman, I mean, I fully respect everything that you've done with this department, and everything your people continue to do. And as I said the other day, I just wish you the best in your retirement, and hope you have a lot of fun and enjoy life. Thank you.
As stated before, I love the way you look in your polo.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
I would ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.